Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, January 6, 2015. I noticed the typo already. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm assuming there's a flag over there. All I see is a symbol. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, again.
I feel like I'm in a voice count.
I got one of those uniforms now.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to have everyone partake in a moment of silence to reflect on our duties as a board for the town and also to keep in your thoughts and prayers our soldiers, both overseas and in the United States, and pray for their safe return. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, I have announced that this meeting is being recorded by the Selectmen's Office and also by East Long Meadow Cable, and I have to ask if anyone else is recording this meeting.
Could you draw from the room line?
Thanks, Chris. Our first item today, we have no one down for the public forum, so... Yes, sir.
Do you have to sign up in advance?
Yes. Yeah, you have to sign up. Well, normally it's the previous Friday by the end of the day, but in this case, because Friday the offices were closed, it was actually Wednesday by noon.
Wednesday night. Tell them when our next meeting is.
Let's see, our next meeting would be, let's see, our next meeting is the 20th and the 27th? Third? Fourth?
Third, February 3rd.
February 3rd will be the next public forum, because we have one once a month.
I could meet with you tomorrow, if you would like, because you seem to have an urgent look on your face, and I feel sorry that you didn't know that in advance.
No, I'm just a little frustrated as a collective bargaining rep for a group of East Long Meadow school bus drivers directly employed by the schools. The union was notified that there was an insurance meeting this evening. Instead, the town sought fit to send certified letters to our steward and to the alternate steward, but not to the union office. And I found out because our steward called and asked if I was going to be attending tonight's meeting. We had addressed this with the town several years ago, so I didn't know to get on the agenda because we weren't notified. And the union steward, who's not directly representative of the central union office or able to administer the collective bargaining agreement, was the only one that sent a certified letter. So forgive me for not making arrangements to be on the speaker's desk in advance.
So through the chair, is it possible when we come down to that portion and on our agenda that this gentleman could speak at that time since it is there?
Sure. I mean, I realize today, we're, you know, we've sent out, I believe we've sent out letters to all the unions, I believe, right?
That's right. As far as, as far as we know, we... The Board of Selectmen's Office contacted union representation to find out who to send letters to, and as far as I know, that should have been, we were informed that that's where those letters should have gone.
Right.
So if you want to put it up for a vote, I mean, it's the pleasure of the board, I just think, since it's on there.
Well, when we get to it...
When we get to it, exactly.
All right. Why don't we, we'll start with our next hour, 6:15 appointment, who's Anthony Gentile, American National Director.
I'm all the way around, because I'm not that...
I'm worth coming around the block for. Can do it.
How are you doing?
I'm well. How are you?
Good.
The reason why I'm here, I think everybody got the letter that I...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We were awarded a $8,435 grant from MEMA for our EMPG grant for fiscal year, federal fiscal year, excuse me, '13 and '14. I just wanted to let the board know that we did get that grant. I worked very hard, it was my first one, and it was a struggle at times. I had help from the fire chief, helped me out. The IT director helped me out as well, as well as Bruce Auguste, our MEMA representative. I overcame the hurdles, and we were awarded the grant about a month and a half ago. With that money, I plan on purchasing some communications equipment, as well as a monitor for the EOC, which is actually in the fire department in the back room. There is no monitor in there to monitor weather or security cameras or have a computer hooked up to it. There is a display for a projector, but that's it. So that's what I plan on doing with that grant.
Just out of curiosity, just from my personal background, I notice it's the grant, it's for fiscal year that's...
Federal fiscal year, yes.
It's federal fiscal year.
Yep, yep. And I assume the next one will be '15 and '16, we'll start getting the paperwork January of '16.
Okay. All right. Great. So that was your first...
Thank you. That was my first one. It was rocky. Again, I have to thank the fire chief, he helped me out. The IT director, Ryan, helped me out as well, as well as Bruce Auguste, helped me get through the hurdles, so...
That's great.
Hopefully, next time, it'll be a lot easier for me and hopefully get here sooner with it, so...
And as we always say, whenever you get grant money, it certainly helps the town, it helps the budget process, it helps us get, sometimes get items that we may not be able afford in our own course of business.
And we wouldn't have been able to, yeah, we wouldn't have been able to without this grant, so I'm very happy.
And you are the one group that we hope we never see in use, but if we ever need you, obviously in the past we've had situations, so...
Absolutely.
So we're glad to see that we can get, we're getting more equipment and being more prepared for any theoretical problems that may arise.
I've always been trained to prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so...
Sounds good. All right.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your effort, Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the next item of business, under all business, is, as we just stated a minute ago, we, at the request of appropriations and the continuing effort to try to get, you know, get the budget process going and try to find ways to save money, we had sent out letters to the union heads expressing, I believe expressing the thought that we're considering, we're looking into changing the, possibly changing the parameters of the insurance policies. I don't make you want to expound on that anymore.
I would offer that the board is going to consider changes to Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23, Employee Health Care, which allows for a bargaining system to be put in place with the unions on any proposed healthcare changes. I might add that the board, at the moment, is not, tonight, I don't believe, is looking to make or announce any specific changes, but the adoption of this is the first step. The board has previously adopted it in, I believe, 2012 and made changes, and again adopted last year but did not make changes. This is coming up for a vote again at the advice of Labor Council that if the board wanted to do it, that it would be proper for it to make that vote first.
Okay. And I believe we're also waiting to find out from our insurance carriers the effects of potential changes, because we don't really know the dollar values of, you know, of any potential changes we're picking up.
Well, that is correct. As far as the actual dollar values, the Scenic Valley Group has not yet put forth any rates for the coming fiscal year. However, the board, if it so chose to engage in these negotiations, could have some kind of a good idea on a useful range of what any savings and any mitigation might be, based on current experience, current rates. So you would be able to go forward and begin that process once you've identified ways in which you think that you might want to look at curbing those costs.
Very good. Now, I know we have someone in the audience who, you know, unfortunately didn't know the process of the open meeting, which actually is probably better that we do this now, but if you would like to, first of all, introduce yourself and then express, you know, give us... Yeah. Come on.
I'm a business representative with United Food and Commercial Workers, 1459. I am not a resident of East Long Meadow, but our union represents two distinct bargaining units in East Long Meadow, the maintenance employees at the East Long Meadow Housing Authority, as well as the direct employees of the public schools that drive school buses. And I'd like to ask for your consideration to, again, table this motion, Agenda Item Number Five. I was present in 2012 when Labor Council, Russ Denver, Attorney Denver from Sullivan and Hayes, advised for the implementation of 32B, Sections 19 through 21, 21 through 23. And the net result of that is a ending of collective bargaining talks. And it doesn't, in and of itself, offer cost savings, it just prevents union input from discussing cost savings in a meaningful manner. So there's a one-month period under statute that allows for union input, and if no headway is made, then the town can follow 32B, 21 through 23 procedures and end negotiations and move towards unilateral implementation of their offer. This board, the East Long Meadow Select Board, has been very compassionate towards the employees in East Long Meadow, wondering about the impact of large-scale changes. I've been present at more than a few select board meetings where the impact of increasing deductibles or out-of-pockets and the net effect on a family's income, especially a family in trouble, because you're going to use the health insurance when you're in trouble, not when you're healthy and when you're in good spirits. But the input that would be needed to make a compassionate change in the health insurance should include the employees that are so affected, and those employees are overwhelmingly unionized and overwhelmingly residents of the town of East Long Meadow and directly affected. It would seem that although the board is well within its rights to adopt and to pursue unilateral implementation, if they saw fit, it seems, in the spirit of the board's concern with the welfare of the employees and the overall impact on each East Long Meadow employee's resident or family that is an East Long Meadow family, that it might be a good idea to get their input, or at least go through the process. I know in Holyoke, Holyoke has not adopted 32B, Sections 21 through 23, and there's the most contentious form of health insurance committee that the Speaker of the House, when they rammed through the 32B, 21 through 23 modifications several years ago, that it was a model like Holyoke with a traditional, what's referred to as a Section 19 Committee, with a binding authority, union committee, that the Speaker of the House was worried about. Well, if you talk to the mayor of Holyoke, the Section 19 Committee has brought forth savings to the tune of $1 million plus the year before last, $1 million last year, and making changes that were discussed with the union membership, were led and driven by the union committee. And as we sit here talking right now, as a union representative on the Section 19 Committee with sizable bargaining units in the city of Holyoke, the city of Holyoke is looking to adopt a self-funding mechanism that could produce, again, six zeros in savings. And Holyoke is not that much bigger than East Long Meadow. The 2010 census said that Holyoke had 39,000 residents, and East Long Meadow is in the neighborhood of 15,000, 16,000, somewhere in that ballpark, just shy of 16,000, I believe. So I would ask politely that there be more information on Agenda Item Number Five, and in the spirit of, and eventually, hopefully, with more information having been discussed about the adoption, again, of this, what I would term onerous provision, eliminating the input of the people that are affected by the changes, that eventually the motion to adopt would be defeated, and we would have, again, a civil discussion about how to best deal with the high cost of health insurance, which I would again say is not the fault of sick and injured East Long Meadow employees. It's a much bigger root cause than just folks taking ill. So thank you for your time, and thank you for indulging me and letting me speak. I know now, and I promise I'll always call the Friday before if I come here again.
Any questions from the board?
Through the chair. My understanding is that we have already accepted 32. This is just a confirmation, again, an affirmation asked by council. Is that correct, Nick?
Council's advice that to engage in the process that this section, that these sections call for, that the vote be taken to do so, that the board couldn't... Council's advice would be that you need to take the vote, that you couldn't just begin that process without doing so. So therefore, there was notice to the unions, and I'll just reaffirm your information, if I could, sir, before you go.
Sure, Nick. I give you my card.
I may have it, of course, I remember from the last time.
Yes.
But, so the vote would need to be taken, sir.
But in the last time that we have done, adopted this, would you say that the board had communicated very fairly? Are you concerned that the board would not communicate fairly this time, as opposed to the last time? Because I would assure you, that would not be the case. We would definitely make sure that we continue that effort, the efforts of communicating.
I think it would be akin to me communicating with my physician, and the physician doing what's in my best interest without ever telling me. It's a collaborative relationship, and especially where, unlike a physician-patient relationship, where there's a dynamic where the physician definitely has the upper hand in the knowledge of the illness and treatment and so forth, but the patient's input can help define the diagnosis. And what we have in this is, we have a large group of employees, residents of the town overwhelmingly, and dedicated servants of the town, that with the adoption of this particular provision, with what my term, a surface bargaining period allowable by law, in this case, if this provision is adopted, then the nuances of the impact would be lost and left for you to decipher on your own without the input of the people that are affected. And if the compassion that this board has shown in the past with regards to implementing increased out-of-pocket expenses, higher deductibles, copays, and so forth, it might be worthwhile to hear the input of the folks that are affected in a meaningful fashion. Just a thought. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Give me one of your cards.
You're going to give one to... Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
What's our timeline look like on this?
Mr. Chairman, there was a question.
Yeah, what was it? What's our timeline look like on this?
So you go backwards from when everything, from the town's perspective, should be settled to fit within the open enrollment period, and you'd really need to have everything in place, meaning an agreement on this, really by about mid-April, so that there would be enough time for materials to go out with open enrollment. Now, a couple of things that I would bring up to the board that, within this process, it is indeed a 30-day process once it commences. There are deadlines, and the unions do have the obligation, and the town has the obligation to meet during that time period and come up with an agreement on what is being proposed. So if the board said, you know, we'll do this matter, it's going to, here's the savings, and that's part of what the town's obligation is, a large part of it, there will be those sessions to see whether or not there's agreement on it. It is, as I understand it, and Mr. Kylie's certainly a well-versed professional, but it's my understanding that, you know, there are provisions that if there are no agreements at the end of this, that there is a provision for mediation panel. Now, whether or not that is some, the way it's structured and meant to operate, that's something that the unions may, may perhaps not agree with, but there is another source that it goes to ultimately if there's no agreement by the two sides.
So I don't think, at least as far as tonight, I may be wrong with the voice of the board here, but I don't think we'll be adopting this. I've got questions I'd like to bounce off labor attorneys and whatnot, so...
Is council coming this evening?
Labor Council will be here this evening? Yes.
And...
All right. So Chairman, yes.
Can we follow up with her on this?
Yeah.
Today, though.
Yeah.
One further thought, that one of the points that Mr. Kylie had made, that I'd heard at least, was that he would like for the opportunity for the unions to have, provide input on impact, and to me, I took that as to mean, you know, outside of this kind of a situation. How would the board want to consider any of that impact if the unions were willing to give it? And should that even be the way to go? And I think that could be a question for council.
That is one of the questions I want to ask.
Either do, either conduct the business the way it's meant to be under the statute, or is there an opportunity, or should the town engage? And I think that's a question for council.
Okay. Then we shall ask it. Thank you. All right. Next items. Our Budget Matters. Does anyone have any issues with any of the board department budgets?
How did you want to do it?
Good question.
One at a time, or... I thought you would go through.
Yeah.
Which one? Do you have all of yours today?
Yeah.
Now, we're just talking, I don't talk much. Because so much is up in the air with regards to the state budget, there's a lot of, I'm just really approaching this very cautiously, so are we even going to consider supplemental budgets at this point, or are we just looking at the main?
Well, I think the supplemental budgets are something that, we're going to approve the actual budget that's going forward. The supplemental budgets can be put in there, and it's ultimately a discussion with appropriations based on whatever, what kind of funding actually comes through, whether any of those can be acted on, if you will. I think that was their wish, was to have us go through the budget with the 2% max increase and then, for the expenses, and then provide a supplemental budget, but that's nothing that, I'm not sure, do we, I'm not even sure if we have to vote. Do we vote on a supplemental budget?
If the board's prepared to, I think the board could vote on, you know, any portions of the budget. I think the charge that your department heads have from appropriations is to submit our budgets to them for their consideration, their process, no later than the 13th of January.
Right. Okay. Of course, it didn't, it started in, that's their actual budget, that they're requesting, not their wish list budget.
Well, some of them included it right in their budget, though.
Well, they were two separate budgets, so we had the budgets that had the 1% to 2% increase, and then they had the supplemental behind them, I believe. So...
It's my understanding that appropriations would, sort of a dual system, maybe you have a different opinion of it, but my understanding is that department heads would hand in all three pages, the regular budget, the supplemental budget, and the third page denoting employees and whatnot. But I think it could be noted by the department heads on their budgets when they turn them in, whether or not and which ones are approved, so that you would think that maybe the main budgets are striking any lines or any changes the board wants, along with anything on the supplemental, if you're prepared on those, and so that they can submit it to appropriations with an idea of what has been approved to date.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then we will go through, and I got these in this book with the way...
Well, you're going in that one. Okay. I haven't put them in there. That was okay.
So the first budget item would be, the first budget would be the accounting budget. And I don't think there's actually a negative one, I guess you can't call it negative one an increase, but it's actually came in at 1% under. I don't know if there's any questions from anyone else, I can't know anything that has to be...
When they get there, first, I apologize, because I just didn't have them in that order. On her, with regards to the... With regards to the seminars?
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the supplemental? I'll get there, I'm sorry.
I don't believe there's any, the supplemental, I think there's...
I'm going to look at yours.
Training seminars, mileage...
Training seminars, yeah.
There's mileage and tolls, and there's meals, and...
That's a big increase, because it wasn't there before, right?
Right. I think it was, I think it was split out from somewhere else. But that's something that is a necessity in that...
In that? Go ahead.
Because of the job, and because of the, in order to keep current on both municipal laws and tax laws, and...
Because that's a brand-new line...
Right.
That was added.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out how to keep it.
And I don't think, this is actually, I believe, the first time we've had a CPA as a...
Right.
So that's another thing to consider, is, but there's also, let's see, there, that's a new item, but there's also a significant reduction in office supplies and things, so as far as total budget.
Is that because we took office supplies and put them someplace else?
I'm trying to think of what she had said. I think...
That's your lead is on, right?
Yeah. I don't think...
That's just my question on that one. And again, that comes with my concern with what's happening at the State House.
Right. But I, once again, we're, as long, my thought process is, as long as we're within the guidelines of appropriations, then we can't, I don't really want to, for lack of a better word, overthink these. If the department heads did their work and came in within the 2% or less, and there's nothing frivolous on there, which I don't believe there is.
Okay. But I thought it was just the 2% that we were increasing on. Maybe I'm just overthinking, maybe I am overthinking.
Well, it's 2% on the total budget.
Yeah.
And she's actually minus 1%, so she actually reduced the budget by 1% from the previous year.
All right.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a clarification. The appropriations wanted us to submit budgets that reflected what the contractual obligations would be up on the top...
Right.
In addition to any 2% line items and operations.
Operations, right.
Right. Yeah.
So does that mean...
Yeah, she's with, yeah, the only salary increases she has up on top are the contractual obligations.
Yep.
And other than the supplemental, she's looking for an increase in hours. But as far as the regular budget, everything's within contractual obligations up on top, which is a 1%. And then she actually, the expenses are reduced by 7%, but because of the dollar values, it ends up being a net 1% reduction.
Okay. Well, if it comes back to us from appropriations, I think we need to look at some of these other things. If you're just looking at the bottom line of 2%, everybody seemed to be with, except for the one I believe... for the one, I believe, is within those parameters.
Right.
However, there seems to be some additional things that were added in, and I would think that maybe we wouldn't add additional things in, they would just be at a negative percent further underneath. But it's, if that's.
Well, it's a necessity of the department, and it, with all, I mean, we're, we're getting, the accounting department's getting into, it's, it's been very well run and.
Yeah, it is, agreed.
We've got, like I said, we've got someone in there with, there are credentials that have to be kept up, and, and obviously, the systems always need, the systems always need people to go to seminars and keep on top of munis and the various, various certifications.
Now, the munis, isn't that something that's paid for? Munis, is there a charge for munis certifications or, or updates? Don't we get that as part of the package through IT?
Yeah, it's about $50,000 a year.
So why are we paying it through IT?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm just saying there's a $3,050 item here for.
Okay.
Increase, but I'm, I'm thinking that might be part of it. There's, it's training seminars for department on regulations, update systems, CB credits.
It does not cover training, just.
Does not cover training.
Just maintenance.
Any, any further questions?
No, she's, she's in the 2%.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the budget for the accounting department.
So.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The only discussion that I have is if it comes back from appropriations, that we look at it again.
Yeah, okay. And then the supplemental request is, I believe the only change is a, a potential increase in a, in an employee from 30 to 37 and a half hours, but that's something that obviously is something that I would think that, given the funds appropriations, would look at that. But other than that, there's nothing, I don't believe there's anything else.
But I would just ask that we just vote on the main budgets and not the supplementals at this time?
Well, we have to, we have, they both have to be turned in by next week, so I don't know if we're going to turn in supplementals with no, with no approvals. That's fine, too. I mean, I have no problem with that, but the, the budgets are all being turned in a week from today, so.
Right.
And we have no meetings in between now and then.
Okay.
So, if that's fine, I mean, can we have them sub, you know, submit the supplementals without approving them?
I believe the board can do that, yes.
Okay, then that's what we'll do. And that way, we'll sort of leave it up to appropriations to review them, and once they get final figures in a few weeks, hopefully, then they can just, they can look at them and see what, or we can get back together with them and deem, you know, determine what's really necessary. All right. And next.
So when we, when we be voting on that?
Well, we're not, we're not voting on the supplemental, just, yeah, yeah. All right.
Your next one is animal control is accurate.
We can do that.
Since you're going in order.
Well, yeah, that's.
Oh, no, that's not what you want to do.
It's a long story. Animal control is accurate, but that's not.
Oh, well, that's.
I have tabs.
We're not all in the same order?
No. All right.
Where'd we get our books?
I know. Okay, animal control. Once again, there was no, there were no increases in salaries.
Yeah, on the different one.
If I could distribute, there's a packet each for the board members, and based on our, my conversation with the board last, at that last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
In there are the, when we went through the budgets last time, I pointed out to the board where the numbers would be shifted.
Yep.
Changed. The substance of what was done, you know, didn't change what we talked about, but in there is, are the numbers that we talked about as we went through them. So animal control, I think, is about halfway through the packet.
Okay, and actually, it looks like those, these numbers changed a tiny bit from what we discussed, too, because I had written down a couple of numbers, but that's, they weren't, they're not material, it's only a hundred bucks or so. But ultimately, okay, so there was no, there was no increase between the two years, percentage wise. And there's some items that were shuffled around, and, like I said, basically no salary increases. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the animal control budget as submitted.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Question?
Sure, go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
I understand that the board is not taking action on supplementals. I would ask for, however, consideration as to whether or not the board would look at the animal control supplemental, and see if you're ready to make a decision on that one at this time, since it deals with the proposed increase in the stipend and for the holiday.
Is it possible that when appropriations need, that we convene our meeting at the same time, and we can say so then?
If we can, if we can make it, if we're going to make it to their meeting, I know, this was the item that, back in September.
Right.
It had been, we had approached the subject, and.
Yep.
We, basically appropriations and the board had agreed that this was something that should be done, but because appropriations doesn't want to do any salary slash stipend changes during the, during the special town meeting.
Right.
We elected to put it off until, until the town meeting in May.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, I, unless something's changed.
Because if, if you're going to do one, I guess it's more like if you're going to do one, then maybe you should do.
What's that?
So your justification is that we had spoken to them about this already?
Well, we'd all, we'd.
Yeah, you're right.
I think, I think everyone had agreed on the, on the increase or the, the change, it was just a matter of not doing it in October, doing it in May at the regular town meeting.
Respectfully to the chair, I think there was an agreement in having an increase, but the amount of the increase was not in total agreement, but simply because it's, it's a 50% raise.
Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know, in the, in these, in this economy, I just think that's a bit much. So, but if it's the pleasure of the board to do that at this time.
Well, we're basically just, we're approving the, the budget going forward to appropriations, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the supplemental budget to, for the dog, well, the dog officer, the animal control officer?
Some more.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I'm not, just for the record, I'm not in agreement of the amount of the increase.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, I don't know if you guys, I don't know what you guys have next, like I said, I've got these.
I've got border, still, my next.
All right.
What do you have next?
Like I said, these are all tabs, like in this room.
So, there were any ones in the packet that were just handed out that reflected what was discussed?
Okay, yeah, yeah, we got the.
I'm on my third, sorry. The faster one.
Okay, yeah, the only thing that had changed was a couple items were, were reclassified, if I remember correctly. Is there a motion to approve the board of selectmen budget?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, once again, just noting that the only increases in salary are contractual increases, and the other, the non-salary expenses remain within the 2%, limit suggested by appropriations. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Next one I have is the building inspector.
Yep. Now, we're going up quite a bit. Actually. All right, once again, there were no salary increases, well, a tiny one, but that was a contractual. It was actually, non-salary expenses were increased by 2%. I'd like to make a motion to approve the building inspector budget as presented.
Some more.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
For the health?
Is there another new one? We did have.
No.
After our discussions on increasing the health agent's pay, this was one of the budgets that did have an increase in the salary department, or stipend, whatever the health department, health agent gets. As far as other expenses, there's actually went, went down. The dollar amount that went up into the salary section was taken out of other purchase services, so it was a net, it netted zero, but it's just a matter of putting it into the salary range instead of the non-salary expenses, so you actually end up with a, with the same dollar amount coming in, but the percentage is changing. I'd like to make a motion to approve the health department budget.
Some more.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
When you say increase.
I think you.
I'm looking at this new one, and he just gave us, just now.
Yep, yep.
And so, this is the supplemental?
Yes.
Yes, it's on top. I'll read it.
Yeah, okay. So we're approving the supplemental?
We're approving the regular one, right now.
Okay, fine, with the regular one.
Okay.
We'll go with the supplemental.
All in favor?
Aye.
And actually, the supplemental was our, was our discussions, trying to get a full-time health agent, which.
Yeah.
You know, ultimately, we're having so many problems trying to get.
Yeah.
Anyone that.
Yeah.
It would be, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to do, but.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, the step nine, too, where'd we come up with that? Who came up with that?
I think, Nick, did you come up with this, for the salary, for the health, when you gave us the supplemental with the new full-time, with a theoretical full-time health agent?
We got it at a step, at a grade nine, step two.
Well, what I, what I did there was give the board an idea of where that rate would fall, so if you made a full-time health agent, that would be equal in today's, you know, today's contract of, well, at $22 an hour for full-time hours, that would work out to 43, 230. And what I'm saying here is, when you look at the town employees' union contract as a comparison.
Mm-hmm.
That would mean, that would fall at a grade nine, step two.
Okay. But I, okay, I guess that's another discussion, another day.
Doesn't mean the position's a grade nine, step two.
Right.
It means that the pay would fall at that level.
But are there other grades that have that, that number in it as well? Like, would a grades eight or six have that, at some point have, it would just be at a higher step, I would imagine?
I, I believe when I looked at it, the eight, six wasn't quite that high.
Okay. All right, okay.
Well, since we haven't really, really, we've only voted on one supplemental budget, I don't know if we want to just, because this is one of those, one, basically big time wishlist things, and.
I thought, I thought we were only doing one supplemental, that was the exception, only because, and the reason was, because they had heard it already at the appropriations, and that was, I thought that was the only reason that we had voted on it.
So we'll just keep, we'll, just, they can submit this one, but we won't vote on it. What have you, again, next?
I've got celebrations next.
That's a biggie. Actually, there's, there was a 0% increase, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the celebrations cultural historic budget as presented.
Some more.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Clerk next.
Mm-hmm.
Seems we got everything for the portion.
Did you get the budget thing?
Which one?
Thank, clerk.
Okay, so, this is the regular.
Fifth.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what, so it's not, yeah, he's in 2% for the total budget, just wanted to see if there's anything. There's nothing, there's just more, more or less items being shifted around, so there's no major changes, and all the salaries have to do with contractual obligations, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the treasurer clerk collective budget as presented.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next, council agent?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
All of this is him? Yep, all of that is him. Okay, you have the council agent.
All right. Now, okay, once again, with the regular budget, only contractual obligations above the line for salaries, there's a 2% increase in expenses.
Yep.
Even though the total dollar value was $442. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council agent budget as presented.
Just the regular budget, yes. Some more.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now that we got the swing of this alphabetical thing, I'm hoping I'll catch next.
Okay, is next, yeah.
All right.
Now, there's nothing on there.
As we keep repeating when we talk about cable access, the cable funds do not come from direct taxation, they come from that lovely little fee that's tacked on to your charter bill every month for community access, so in this case, the, the budget, the salary items are all, are good contractual, and Mr. Mackey kept the non-salary expenses at 2%. So in that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the cable access budget as presented.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I've got elections next.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's back to Tom Florence.
Actually, I already have a, I know we gave it to somebody.
Yeah, I did. That's what I was looking at.
And I think the elections budget, if I remember correctly, is.
There was nothing.
Yeah, there's, there's, it was smaller because.
Because of less elections.
Our years of seven elections hopefully were over.
Yeah, so I, I didn't have any questions on that one at all.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the elections budget as presented.
Some more.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you, while you.
Next, I got emergency prep.
Wait, can we, okay, yep, emergency prep, yeah.
Yep. There's absolutely, there's absolutely no change from fiscal '15 to '16, so I'd like to make.
Look at yours.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the emergency prep budget as presented.
Some more.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I have to thumb through somebody's PowerPoint presentation to get to the budget, which looked great on TV, I was watching it the other night.
Just a guy presenting, oh.
Now, that'd be nice. The fire budget, there was actually a 1% decrease in the salary section, and there was a 2% increase in non-salary expenses, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the fire department budget as presented.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, just the 58% for the contractual, for the new firefighter, when he has his degree, is that, does that go in there?
Yes.
Yes.
This, okay.
Because that's contractual.
Okay, I was thinking, and he has it already?
Yes.
Okay, so he got it last year and so.
He actually didn't get it last year because he was brand new, that's why it's an increase in this, in next year's budget.
Got it, okay, thank you, that was my only question.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next.
Uh, next I have, uh, health insurance.
I think we already, how, how, we did the Health Department.
But that's, I think that's a whole different one, and human resources is in there, is in there just for a tab, the next one would be IT?
Yeah. All right, and once again, under IT, the only contractual increases, the only increases, I'm sorry. Yeah, the only salary increases were contractual obligations, and as far as non-salary expenses, it was kept at the two percent level, and there were items that were line item changes, and the proverbial shuffling of expenses to get them to the right spots finally. I'd like to make a motion to approve the IT budget as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next you have legal?
Next is legal, yeah.
Oh, that guy.
It did provide the board with an updated version, it just reflected a slight change that the board had directed me to put in.
Was it for legal?
Yeah, in legal, two percent anticipated in the, um, non-salary.
Okay.
Um, wasn't that like a wishlist type of thing? It, it deleted it? Or did we just put it in?
I think, I think we just.
I had the note to put it in.
Yeah, I think we put it in just to, because we have the ability to do the two percent.
But what if he doesn't ask for it, do we need to give it to him?
He asked me to write it there.
Because you know how to ask.
He's ignoring us, but, okay, um, do you have copies of that?
I think we should have gave them to the board.
No, we didn't. Not on this one.
I, I see the amount, I wrote the amount down, it was, uh, with a two percent.
Ninety-nine, nine-sixty.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I would like to make, that's right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the legal services budget as submitted with the two percent increase.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, if he decides he doesn't want to have it, we'll take it out.
And actually, I don't think this is his, this is, um, for other, you know, um, this isn't for the town council, this is for other legal council and that. All in favor?
Aye.
Payable tax?
That's the.
Police.
All right, um, the police budget was actually, salaries were contractual obligations, although with the, with the retirements and replacements, they actually came in significantly under, under what they had, and the non-salaried expenses had a zero percent increase, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the police budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is recreation.
No, recreation is separate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. Questions?
Yes.
With the, he's under the, well, actually, no, he's not. He's at three percent?
Yeah, and that's, um, it was a step raise, and I believe we had changed a part-time person to a full-time person for, although that, I believe that has to be.
I see where there was, the, and there was some increases in some lines, right here.
Yeah.
Right here. And this is only because we're over the two percent that was recommended, and then.
Actually, we're not in the non-salaried expense, not in the, in the expenses, we're only over one.
So you're not even going to, you're not going down to the grand total?
Well, yeah, the three, the three percent is, is because of the salary, the contractual obligations also, because the non-salaried expenses only, it's only a one percent increase. But the total is three percent, and that's, that's mainly because of the, um, contractual obligations and that part-time person that became a full-time person.
Full-time. But are we, so by voting this in, are we approving the full-time position? I just want to be real clear on this.
I thought that had, I thought we okayed that position through June thirtieth of this year, and it was going to be up for.
And that's what we're talking about right now.
Right, right.
So are, I guess I'm asking what, I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
So that there's no confusion, and everybody understands and we're all on the same page. So are we creating a full-time position at this point and alleviating that part-time position?
Well, that's what we did in this, in this fiscal year.
Right.
And I think we were trying to carry it forward, because I think we said the full-time person had to reapply for their job, because it was going to be.
Exactly, because it's being created in this budget. So we're approving that in this budget.
Yes.
Question that I have is where, with regards to step levels, um, where the person is, and what else did I have circled on there? I think that's, that was, that would be it, I think that would bring him right under that two percent.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But there was, there was an increase in, um, the hotel, though. From last year to this year. Maybe not.
Okay, yeah.
But that comes out to be forty-two dollars per month.
What's that hotel?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, but that's,
It just adds up quickly.
Three nights.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, I just, I just did one the other day, you're right. All right, I'm good.
All right, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recreation department budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Any further discussion?
I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the step increase is, because I have to ask him.
I, I don't think there should be a step increase, because it, it'll be a new position, and you'll just be coming into it, um, so to make sure that those numbers, I'm agreeing with the concept of this budget, however, those numbers should be clarified to make sure that there was, that was entering at the same point, because it is a new hire.
Right.
Okay, that's the only thing that I have on that.
All right.
And with that said, I'm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next. Next we talk trash.
Oh, trash. Trash.
And trash stayed within the two percent budget increase, right now we're having a contract negotiations
Right.
beginning, but as far as the current contract, the, the, uh, non-salary expenses stay within the two percent, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the trash, collection and disposal contract as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I just found, I just found my treasurer.
Yeah, but we already approved that, so we did it.
Veterans?
Veterans.
Basically, there was one percent decrease, all said and done, and the veterans' budget is always in, in a state of flux, because you like to see his expenses go up, because that means we're reaching more veterans out there and providing more services, so. But as it stands now, the budget is basically the same as it was the previous year, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the veteran service budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I believe.
Mr. Jennings, just a, a side note on the veterans.
Yeah.
Received an email from Mr. Commerford today that they were trying to call a meeting for the twentieth of January, so I emailed him back and said that the board's scheduled to meet that evening at, at six o'clock, they wanted to call the meeting for six forty-five, so. I didn't hear back from him. And if the board,
We definitely should go to that one.
If the, if the Board of Selectmen, uh, wants to make a change in the date, I'd need to know that, because there's, uh, a liquor license hearing that's going to be scheduled for the next meeting. And we have to advertise that.
And they can't change their meeting?
Well, I haven't heard back. He did, you know, state that there's a need to have a quorum, but I didn't hear back about any alternate dates.
Maybe we can see from them for, because you're really, you're the liaison.
And we definitely need to, I've been waiting for a meeting for them.
All right, and if they can't change it, then maybe we can move our meeting up a day or out a day or something like that, so nineteen to twenty-first if we have to.
I guess what Nick is saying, that he needs to know, kind of like now, because he's scheduling a hearing?
Well, how so, how much advance notice do you need for the hearing?
Actually, I think the hearing,
It's already scheduled?
The hearing has been scheduled.
Okay, for the twentieth, all right. Yeah, see if.
I, I didn't realize that, I, I, I didn't, I thought it would be after this meeting that we're scheduling it, but.
All right, and those are sort of set in stone, we can't, we'll go.
Well, I think you can postpone them, but, um, I, I wouldn't know the process of the.
All right, okay. Well, we'll keep that, we'll, we'll see if we can get, get them to change their meeting, you know, the veterans. And just explain the situation and say we'd like to be represented there, but unfortunately, we have a meeting the same night.
We have to go to their next meeting, um, to discuss, the fact that we'll be, the amount of money that will be in charge, and trying to get the services regulated here at the center.
Okay. All right, so we have approved budgets. Uh, the next item to discuss is the, um, local option meals tax, which would add point seventy-five percent to the meals tax that's already being, collected by our establishments in town, I don't know if, I reviewed the information that we got, I don't know if the board's prepared to any discussion on that, or.
Well, the way I understand it, it doesn't take, we don't have to vote it in at a specific time, it takes effect on the first day of the next quarter of the, of the date that we vote. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, I also believe that it's, uh, requires legislative, uh, vote of a town meeting. But I was hoping that may, the council might be able to, like, give the board a little bit of information on that, if he, if he has some off the top, I haven't had a chance to speak with him about the matter, so I don't know if he's versed in it.
We can always know.
Can we check?
When you, we can pick it up till when he comes up, if you want. How are you?
Just have to wait, you know.
Happy news?
Thank you, see.
First we go over your budget, now we have to wake you up.
Oh, you got a cough?
Stay over there.
I don't have a cough, I'm, I'm good, just fine.
Our topic is the local option meals tax.
Yes.
If we were to, that, that has to go to town meeting to be formally enacted, or is it?
I would have to look at the statute, I don't recall specifically, but I think it is a, a, an act that requires adoption by, but I'll check the statute.
Okay, great.
Is it?
That's it? Go back here.
For now. You didn't say that, did you?
Um, next item is elected officials' healthcare. This is something, once again, it's something that the appropriations is, has suggested, um, there is a dollar value attributed to the, to removing healthcare for elected officials. I know Selina Varansky on her way out gave her opinion of this.
Yeah, she did.
And I sort of, I mean, uh, my thought process is, there's, there are certain people who use that, and it's an advantage, and, and you have enough trouble getting qualified people to run for office, and I'm just giving you my opinion, I'm certainly not speaking on behalf of the board. I would be willing to modify it, if, you know, if we had to, um, but I think personally, as far as getting rid of it completely, I think it, it might have a detrimental effect on, on, uh, certain, certain elected boards in, in town, from what I've heard from other people, so, that's just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Have we ever, did we ever think of maybe doing a formal survey of the elected boards who are using it? Because I don't personally, I use the, uh, the dental, but I don't use the, the, um,
The health insurance.
The health insurance.
Yeah. There might be a good idea, at least to, um.
I, I, you're not just speaking for, for us, you're speaking for all elected officials
Right.
on this one. I'm, I do believe in saving money, though. But, um, you, you offer a nice compromise, um, perhaps maybe modifying it, uh, somewhat, and I don't know if we could do that legally, or how that would work.
Yeah, true, I, I mean, I know, obviously, if we were to, were to take into account thirty-two B, that would affect, obviously, elected officials also, as, as being part of the health. But that, yeah, that's a good idea, we can, um, I don't think it would be too difficult to take a poll of the elected officials, elected boards, and see what their thought process is on this, and then go from there.
Let me ask you this.
See if they want.
You know, just get, get an idea of what the other board, elected board, boards and their members think of the idea.
My problem with this is that we have people working nineteen hours or less, and we give them no benefits.
Right.
And they're working, but yet we're given, you know, these people the opportunity to have insurance.
Do you think somebody that's elected works less than nineteen hours? Do you think somebody that's elected works less than nineteen hours?
People we hired for less than nineteen hours or less, so they don't get no benefits.
Right, but people who are elected, don't you, would you agree that they work more than nineteen hours? I know you do.
Well, yeah, that's, you, you take the job knowing that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's one of, they're, they're.
But I, I just don't think it's right that we don't do something with the people in nineteen hours, because they gotta come, they, they gotta work and, uh, you know, we offer them nothing, no benefits, nothing.
They do get a salary.
Yeah. Not much.
It's more than what we can say.
So what about retirees from, who retire from the boards? Are they getting some, would we include them in the, um, survey?
I don't know if we can do anything.
Is anybody doing, is anybody who is not actually serving on the elected board receiving benefits? Has somebody mentioned that to me, and I, I was kind of surprised to find that out?
Yeah, I think if you, what is it, ten years, Nick? If you're on, if you're on board for ten years, you get grandfathered in.
There, there is a, uh, parameter for that, ten years sounds right, I haven't looked at it in several years. The board has had issues come before in the past regarding retirees from boards, and I can tell you to my knowledge, yes, there are people who are in that, uh, situation.
And so they too would be considered in this, um, elected officials' healthcare as well?
Yeah, what we also have to find out in their regard is if we can actually do anything with that, considering they're out of office and they've been offered that, and I don't know, we can, you can look that one up, too.
Because it, uh, through the board.
Yeah.
Because it, I, I looked into it today, it cost us a, to a tune of a hundred thousand dollars.
What's that, for retirees?
For, for retirees and elected official.
No, for retirees and elected officials, or just elected officials?
No, elected officials, and the people that are retired that were paying their insurance. It, it's cost the town a hundred thousand dollars, approximately.
Yeah, let's, Nick, I don't know if we can put something together, sort of like a, informal survey, just to get an idea of, uh, other, you know, all the, all their elected boards, and see what their thought process is on this. And then just go from there, I mean, you know, it can't hurt.
Through the chair, is it possible that we have a, a listing of who is receiving this one hundred thousand dollars worth of benefits? Because it'd be interesting to know, because that's pricey, that's a nice little chunk of change.
Yeah, I believe the current, if I remember correctly, from the appropriations said, the current elected officials, I believe it's seventy-five thousand dollars, the tab for all the current elected officials that are on the, um, on the health insurance note.
So can you, Nick, can you kind of email that to us or drop it in our box? Get it from my Sarah.
You want a, the board is looking for a list of the officials retired or, or active that currently use the health insurance, or do you want a, is that what you want?
That, and then to send a survey to them.
Yeah, because we like to, at least survey the active ones. Uh, because once again, we have, we have to find out as far as retired ones, if we can actually do anything with them, since they're retired and we've already offered them the insurance, um.
Do you know if we can, Mr. Donahue? If we can do anything with the people that are retired, that are, were paying their health insurance? Whether we can resend that?
Usually the situation is that if a person has retired under a specific set of requirements for the community, and the requirements change going forward, that it applies to new elected officials who retire, but will not impact those who have retired under the old.
Because they have to have ten years to get that, right?
There's a tie-in, there, there's a tie-in with the insurance being the retirement system. I don't believe that you can be an elected official at thirty-two, serve for ten years, and then look to convert to, uh, town health insurance for the rest of your life. I think it's connected, there has to be a connection with the retirement. there has to be a connection with the retirement, actually retirement system of the state, although I'm not 100% sure because I haven't looked at that issue in 100 years. But that's my belief.
Okay.
Through the chair, could you look that up and confirm that for us, please?
I already have the list.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's why you get the big bucks. All right. Next item, and I don't have my list here, is the capital planning priorities list.
That's two of us. Well, if we're gonna have a meeting...
I think there were, what's that?
If we're gonna have our meeting during no meeting, can we just...
Well, once again, that depends. I don't know when the meeting is.
Do you know when their meeting is?
Appropriations.
Appropriations meeting?
I don't know when their next one is.
Derek Madison said it was Thursday night.
As in this week?
This week.
So, I don't know. So, we could not post a meeting?
No, that's, it's too late.
Yeah. What's that? Oh, do they meet on Tuesdays?
Yeah, yeah, it was canceled this week.
So, it's next Tuesday?
I believe so. I'll see if it's on the website.
All right. Well, well...
I don't know. Don't have a meeting yesterday.
While you're doing that, we'll move on to, under employee benefits, I believe we had the Domestic Violence Leave Act. We have a, we have some literature regarding that. I know we, we had approved that.
Yep.
We, through the board, don't we have to take a vote on whether that's going to be paid or non-paid, or if they have to use all their, their vacation days or personal days or before they take that?
I believe we do.
We did vote on that.
I thought that's what...
Did we vote on that?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
The board still needs to take voters to whether or not it will be a paid leave.
Okay.
With what, Nick?
Whether or not the leave would be paid. I believe the board's consensus was that it was in favor of the act, but needed time to consider whether or not the employee could take paid leave or not, specifically looking at any paid leave, including sick time.
Okay, so, we're not adding another 14 days of paid, when you say paid, you're talking about either it's paid vacation, paid sick, or whatever they have on the books.
Any accrued paid time that they have.
Okay, and then from what, if I read this correctly, if they use all of that up first, they still have another 15 days of unpaid at the end of using all of that time, all, at the end of using all of their sick time and their vacation time. They would still have 15 days of unpaid.
That's, that's my understanding of it as well, although we do have labor council in the audience.
Oh, then I'll go through the chair. I'll...
This, the statute itself talks about...
Could you come up here, Ms. Taylor?
For the mic, yeah.
I'm a little hard to hear myself.
I don't have a copy of the statute in front of me, but we're pretty well versed over it. The statute itself talks about the, the leave can be either paid or unpaid leave. However, there is also a clause in the statute that talks about being able to utilize all other, like other forms of paid leave that somebody would be eligible for also if they met those criteria before utilizing domestic violence leave. And so, as a practical consequence of that, if somebody is eligible, if you were to, and they don't have to, the, the employee, if they agree, they can have them run concurrently because they don't have to compel that the employee, it doesn't have to be compelled to run concurrently. So, the consequence of that is until we see some regulations on this issue, which we haven't seen anything clarifying this from the AG's office yet, that the consequence is that you could have somebody who took the leave under, leave under existing paid leave systems and then could potentially, depending on how much time they had, it could be covered by other means, also utilize 15 days. So, if you vote to make it a paid leave, that potentially is extending 15 more days of paid leave to an employee. They are statutorily entitled to unpaid leave. Does that help you?
I always wonder, if they were to decide to use their vacation, they get paid that way. They still get to take another 15 days?
If, if they still qualify for the domestic violence leave, yeah.
Okay, let me ask you this.
Under the way it's written now, unless the AG's office gives some different regulatory guidance on that.
Okay, under, under the medical leave?
Under like a FMLA?
FMLA, when they, when they leave, that's unpaid, correct?
FMLA is an unpaid form of leave.
Right.
But under the FMLA, the Family Medical Leave Act, an employer can choose to have somebody who qualifies for FMLA leave have certain types of other leaves that they qualify for run concurrently. So, that's where domestic leave is a little bit different than the FMLA leave in how it's, how it's written. Ultimately, the regulations might show some new light on it.
And so, we as the employer are making the, making the judgment as to whether or not they can use sick time or use vacation time. If, do we have to make that decision? Can, can the employee make that decision that I'm going to use, I'm taking this leave, the, the violence leave, but I'm going to use my vacation time? Are we saying that they can do it, or are they telling us that they can?
Here, here's an easier way to sort of conceptualize it because this is sort of how I think, someone might come to you and they say, I have this, this situation, right? And then as, as the, the employer, the town says, okay, well, I look at this, this person would be qualified for a domestic violence leave under that criteria, or they might be qualified also for, to take vacation or, or something else. The employer could ask if they wanted to run together and the person could say yes or no. And if they don't, then under this, under the statute, as it appears to be written by its plain language, they would be permitted to utilize whatever paid time they had that was not domestic violence leave first and potentially use that domestic violence leave later.
Okay, so, what are we voting on?
So, it sounds like what you're voting on is whether to make domestic violence leave paid or unpaid leave, the, the period of 15 days that they would be... You wouldn't have a situation where somebody could double, you know, get double paid.
No, not double dip. No, no, I understand that. So, we have to make the decision on whether or not they're able to use vacation time or sick time?
No, you're, you'd be voting on just whether you want to make domestic violence leave paid or unpaid. Your existing policy should determine whether they're eligible for sick or other leaves.
Okay, when you say paid or unpaid, who's paying?
It would be the town that would be paying.
Oh, so, you're talking about, oh, no, we can't, that's bringing it up on the budget. No.
Right.
But they still, if we say that it's unpaid, they still have the option of using their vacation or sick time? Okay, I'm good with that.
If, if they qualify for those reasons. Somebody might go to court. They might not qualify for sick, but they could use vacation for that or personal time or something. Okay.
Now, one question I had, just for my personal benefit, is, okay, employee A goes out on domestic leave, domestic violence leave. They use up their vacation time, or they use up some, a, a period of time. Who determines how long they can stay out? Is it a doctor? Is it the court? Is it, certainly can't be us.
Well, there, there's...
Is it the person, individual?
There's a 15-day entitlement under the act if somebody qualifies. And there are many different situations that somebody, that could make somebody eligible for domestic violence leave. So, for example, if somebody has court dates or court hearings that they need to attend as a result of, of something, then yes, that they could attend for that. And there's a list of documentation in the act. It was probably what, from what you had passed, or you adopted as a policy, that really outlines the types of things that could suffice as evidence, as an employer asking. So, a court order, sometimes it is a note from a doctor. It's, it could vary from situation to situation and there is a list for that.
So, in other words, I guess, it doesn't have to run concurrently? Because I guess I'm thinking is, if someone is a victim of domestic violence and say they're out for four or five days and they come back to work, but yet three weeks down the road, they have a court appearance, then they can use that, that leave towards that court appearance and any subsequent?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Wait, before you leave, you also can use all your vacation and then go out under domestic, the domestic plan for 15 days.
Yes.
And you can use your FMLA after if you need more time.
Well, if, if somebody were to qualify for FMLA, an employer can choose. So, let's say they took vacation. An employer could choose to have FMLA run concurrently with, in other words, if it was FMLA qualifying, an employer could have, put somebody on FMLA leave for that and, and somebody could utilize their vacation to cover it. So, the, the interplay of this new law with these other existing laws is a little bit different.
Yeah, right.
It may come into a different view once the AG's office takes a look at it, or we may need to see some tweaks, but, but without really having some defined legislative intent. The language is what the language is and so...
But what I was saying is, it's, say, say I get beat up, right? You know, I get a domestic problem.
I want to see the guy who does that.
I want to see that.
And I, and I took all my vacation, personal leaves and anything I could take, right? And so, now, now I go under domestic rules, right? I got 15 days for that.
Or would it have to be your partner?
No, not necessarily.
That'd beat you up. You, actually, there are provisions that allow for domestic violence leave for somebody who's assisting somebody in their family. So, there are a lot, yeah, there are a lot of different situations.
But after I took all my 15 days that I could take for, for domestic, but I'm, still have to go to the doctor and still have to go to court and stuff, I, you, you still can take FMLA for that because it's...
There's nothing in there that says FMLA can't run concurrently with domestic violence. So, I mean, you really have to, each situation is going to be factually a little bit different and that's going to really determine which laws, which types of leaves apply and, and how this sort of flushes out in the wash. But yes, potentially, somebody may have used all their vacation time, but they're, but they've worked enough during the year. They're qualified for FMLA leave, which is a 12-week period of leave, as well as this 15 days. That's possible, yes.
One last question for me. If we were to pay, is there a fund that would reimburse us for that payment? And do you know of anybody that is making it pay, who is making the payments for that? And if so, how are they budgeting for that?
I am not aware of any towns that have made it, have opted to make it a paid leave yet. And in terms of there being some kind of fund out there, no, I'm not aware of any.
The only thing we did was take a collection among the employees to try to help them for a salary for that week, you know? I mean, we all helped each other, you know?
Then that answers all of my questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Wade.
All right. Yep. I'm going to assume based on the board's questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve a, an unpaid domestic violence leave provision for the town.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion?
Well, if at any point where there becomes a fund, you know, we have a surplus of, because certainly we want to help anybody that's going through those circumstances, but right now, we would not be able to support it financially, but certainly support them by giving them the time off and it is mandated by law.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. Our next item is the Affordable Care Act update, Nick. I don't know how much this affects us because we do offer health insurance to all our full-time employees, but go ahead. Not to undercut your anything, but...
No, there are, there are questions that are still being looked at that will be posed to the board. I'll put it on as a carryover. We still don't have some interest in some of these questions, but I appreciate the comments and I'll make sure I share them with Kareem.
All right, thanks. Tell her I'm getting tired of that affirmation in our block with the bowtie talking about how important it is, those commercials.
But that could all change too.
Yeah.
With what's going on in the government.
This is true.
We could spin our wheels now and then year down the road, everything changed on it, you know?
For the, for the town's part, this is one of the large questions. It has to do with a reporting requirement that'll be due at, for the first time at the beginning of, well, at the end of this current calendar year. And there will be questions about lookback periods and stability periods. And I would assume that Attorney Taylor will be with the board once we are able to get a little bit more information from the volcanic valley about those situations, how the group as a whole, the members are going to handle it, and then whether or not and how much help that group may be providing to each member community to implement some of these reporting requirements. It's a carryover for this evening.
All right, thanks, Nick. Next item is on boards and commissions. We have some vacancies. I know...
Yeah, we read that the last time.
Yeah.
I've heard no, no changes.
All right, we've got some, just to let you know, in conservation, we have one opening. Zoning Board of Appeals, we have one alternate. Council on Aging, we have two openings. Register our voters. We're looking for one Democrat.
Actually, that comes from the Democratic Committee. They're working on that.
The CERT Community Emergency Response Team, they're always looking for the members. And Esalen Meadow ADA Commission, they have three openings for people who would be willing to help with the, with the town and its, and its processes.
I'm going to move forward. Constellationary Swords.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, that's right. Attorney Mary Swords passed away, was it yesterday before? And she was on the Conservation Committee, I believe. Yeah, that was, thank you for noting that. And we offer our condolences on behalf of the town. Our next item, Casino Matters, mitigation committee. The, they're looking to put a local mitigation committee together, Nick, of the towns that are involved in surrounding towns?
Yes, the legislation calls for that. And so, all of the, the host community and all of the surrounding impacted communities are called for having representation on this regional board, if you will. So, it's here for the board's discussion about whether or not, how to fill Esalen Meadows' position and notify the Gaming Commission, who's been appointed.
And they're looking for one person?
One person from each community.
Okay. I think they're trying to keep it. I, I know for whatever it's worth, I think I'm the liaison to the casino, so I'd be willing to, to do that if the board was so approved of that. Is that something we have to vote on?
I would think so.
I would think the board would need to...
I'm also interested in that, but you know, I can let it go.
I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint myself. That sounds stupid, but appoint myself as the, as the person for the local community mitigation advisory committee as, as liaison to the casinos.
I'll, I'll second it.
Is there, is there, you have to, has to be moved first?
Oh, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's okay. No, I, I think you'll do well.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Our next item, Nick, is they, they got a mitigation fund request? It's a little difficult to do if we...
Really, right, notification of the board and to the public that, you know, the Gaming Commission is actively seeking input and applications for any mitigation or any mitigation funds requested. A little difficult, I think, at this point to say, although if there were any outstanding legal payments that needed to be made at this point, but there aren't any to my knowledge. So, I don't think that there's a recommendation from the town at this point for mitigation.
All right.
Because there's nothing there.
Right, we'll keep that.
If I may just back check, please make sure that we receive the information as, as we're going forward as regards that committee.
Okay.
Nothing is too small. I mean, just to keep us abreast.
All right.
Okay.
Next item is annual town reports, Nick. You still looking for our input?
Yes.
Yeah, will be, anybody who has anything to assist Nick in his inspiration of the town report, then feel free to get in touch with him and... report, then feel free to get in touch with him and present him whatever you want.
Yeah, when is the new deadline?
Yeah, what's the deadline, Nick?
I believe it's Friday, the thirty-first of January, is it?
Okay.
Thirty-first of what?
January.
Sixteen twenty, thirtieth, thirtieth of January, yeah. What I, what I could do is provide drafts of last year's, perhaps that would be something that you could at least take a look at.
Okay.
And, you know, work on whatever items from 2014 you want to put in there.
Sounds good. All right, next item is the LCAP policy, which I know...
Yeah.
Selectment and Thorpe is on the, you're on the...
Can you just move that until the next meeting, please?
Oh, sure, okay, we'll table that.
You table on that?
It's some more information that we need to get to you.
And then, next item is public forum guidelines, which I know we, I touched on, I know we've got some information here regarding the public forum and the fact that it's not a, it's not a give and take, you know, it's not a question and answer period, it's a time for any taxpayers who have issues to come in, express their concerns, or, and have us taken under advisement. We give them five minutes, and I know I've said this before, but I know I've been lax with certain people, allowing them more time than necessary, but in the future, we will adhere to, to the timeframes and to the, to the...
What we had, through the chair, what we had talked about at our last meeting was possibly adopting verbiage that was used at a school committee. What you have in front of you is the original one that the school committee uses, and then the proposed one to adopt, to adapt to the Board of Selectment. I, there may be some tweaking that you, that you guys might want to put onto it, but essentially, it says what you were saying, Selectman Federici, was that it is not an answer, and question and answer.
Right.
It is a time for a statement. We may choose to answer any of their questions, or take it under advisement, and that's essentially what the statement says. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get...
You want me to read it into, into the record?
Actually, why don't we review it first?
Okay.
And then, if we have any changes, then we'll do the final one.
Okay.
But I'll give, if you want to get, and we'll give this to arrange, you can make some copies for us, so, all right.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Next item, Nick, is bond refinancing.
I thought I would have the solid date, I think it still is targeted for the twentieth of January.
So, we'll be signing that, those, the...
That's my understanding, I haven't heard different from the clerk yet.
All right, okay, very good. And the next item is Department Head Vacation Request. This is an executive session, right? Or is it?
It could be strategy with respect to non-negotiations.
We will put that off to executive session. All right, on your new business, Fire Department Matters, is this why you're sitting around here looking handsome in your outfit there?
I appreciate that.
No problem, it's a new year, I got to start off on the right foot, why not?
Just to give you, I did hear back from Eric.
Are we not?
It is Thursday. There's a meeting Thursday.
This Thursday?
Operations.
Okay.
Just so you guys...
Yeah, we can't post. And I believe they're expecting our info then, so...
What info?
Our budget submits to them.
Oh, it was supposed to be the thirteenth.
Yeah, he's, when I saw him today, he wanted, he thought we...
Well, we've approved, we've approved him.
Yeah, so we can, I can submit, yeah, I can submit him now, so, but, yeah.
I think, I thought we were going to be there on the thirteenth, I thought that was going to give us an opportunity to attend also. What's happening on the...
Actually, nothing going on on the thirteenth, because we don't have a meeting, so...
But they're not meeting on the thirteenth?
I don't know about that, I know they're meeting Thursday.
Yeah, because I know they had switched them to Tuesdays, like Don said, but I don't know, all right. Well, Nick, can you find out if they're meeting on Tuesday?
We have planned to meet with them on the thirteenth.
Because if that's the case, then we'll post a meeting concurrent with theirs.
For one Thursday?
Not Tuesday, that weekend tonight.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay, so you've got a couple items, one is an unfortunate one, it's a resignation.
Yep. Craig Addison, been a member of the department since nineteen ninety-seven, got on shortly after I did, actually. He's, his life is, is going in a million different directions, he's got two young girls that keep him pretty busy, and he just got a really nice promotion at work, so on his, for his part, good for him. His response, as he's noticed, him and I have been discussing for quite some time, tried to pick it up, and unfortunately, then, fortunately for him, he got the promotion at work, which made it even more difficult, so he, not being able to keep up with the training and the other responsibilities of being a call firefighter, he decided to, it was time to, unfortunately, you know, toss in the hat. He, he, I think, Selectman Federici and Selectman Thorpe may remember, he's the individual that received the award from Enfield Police Department.
Oh, yeah.
Was on his way home one day, driving by a bad car accident, he assisted, so he's been, he's been a valued asset to the department, but, again, he realizes, you know, his, his time, he can't devote what he feels he needed for the department, so...
Okay.
It takes a lot, takes a lot to realize that and step down, too, you know?
Especially after that much time.
Right.
Again, he's been there a long time.
Having a party, what?
There is something set up with the association, I'm not sure when it is, I can let the board know.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. He was popping in tonight to see the guys, but that's not, it was more just an unofficial goodbye and such a thing, so...
All right. He's a good guy, known for a long time.
Yeah, you've been friends with the family, yeah, yep.
Next item, on a happier note.
On a happier note.
It's grant time.
It is grant time, seems that way with the state. Again, this year, we actually received a little bit more money for the student version of our SAFE Award. This allows us to purchase all our literature and any current DVDs, any, any new banners for the new theme for the year, and it also allows us to bring in some extra call firefighters to help us with the program, because when we're running the trailer and doing some other stuff, it, you know, it's a big drain on the staff, so it helps us to cover the shift, to make sure we get it done right. And in the same sense, our senior SAFE Award actually went up a little bit this year, so we'll be able to do some more programs, you know, with the Council on Aging. We were able, last year, we bought quite a few carbon dioxide detectors and smoke detectors, so if we go to an elderly's residence, and we leave, we won't leave without a working carbon dioxide detector in the house, or replacing the battery, or, you know, this helps us fund that, without it coming out of our regular budget, so, yeah, it's great for us.
Great.
Do you go, do you go to assisted living and stuff like that?
Yes, we do go to assisted living, but we don't give them, they have a fully working systems over there.
Okay.
Yeah, never mind.
I know, I know, I know, just trying to, just trying to be good.
I just forgot, Dan.
Okay. And the last item is for our consideration, a three percent increase for the Call Fire Department, I realize your probationary people are getting an automatic increase.
I just, I need to verify that, make sure the board understands, and, you know, the minimum wage has gone up.
Right.
They're not on a payroll yet, they won't be until I officially send you folks the letter, they're doing their in-house training now, it'll probably be March first, they'll be going from eight dollars an hour to nine dollars an hour to meet the new minimum wage. I put the schedule, kind of the schedule, with the last increases for the call firefighters. Typically, it goes a while in between, I mean, this is, this will be three years, or actually four years for them now, actually, more than four, it'll be closer to five. So, three, I don't think three percent for what they do is, these are the guys that get up at, you know, with, with the regulars, they get up at two o'clock in the morning, they come running, so, and, pretty soon, the base pay for just the firefighter is going to be close to the minimum wage in a couple of years anyway, so it may be something we need to revisit in the future.
Okay.
But I think if we can, if we can progress towards it. This is one of the things that, whenever there's been a raise, the Call Fire Department budget hasn't been increased in the past. What I would do is, if this was approved by the board, by the town meeting, I would recommend that we increase the Call Fire Department budget that three percent, which on a fifty-five thousand dollar budget for the call, it's about a fifteen hundred dollar budget, maybe, fifteen hundred dollar increase, maybe a little bit more.
You beat me, I was going to ask that.
You as well?
All right.
And that's, that's a, that's a, I guess, for lack of a better term, that's a swag with that budget, because we, nobody knows how we're going to do for calls for the year.
Now, when you say fifteen hundred dollars...
Okay.
A wild, you-know-what guess.
What's, oh, swag, that's what it is?
Yeah.
It's just a guess?
That's, because, no, the fifteen hundred's pretty close, but the fifty-five thousand dollar budget, as well as the hundred and five thousand for the career firefighters, for overtime, if we have a super busy year, the year we had the snowstorms, it's tough to mean that in that, in that budget, but...
Now, the fifteen hundred dollar increase, does that already include the dollar increase for the...
It doesn't, there, there, it's not going to be that much, I can't see there's being a lot, because there's three of them, or four of them.
Yeah.
You know, so...
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's fifteen hundred?
No, that's not the fifteen, the fifteen hundred would be the entire Call Department.
All right, three percent, okay, very good.
Okay, that's a first rate.
We'll discuss that, yeah. Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item, is the Senior Tax Abatement Workoff Program, which I guess we adopted in May of two thousand and three, according to, and I know other towns have this, and, now, is this on here to actually enact it, or discuss enacting it? I mean, it's here.
The program is in place, this is to provide the board with more information about it, maybe promote it a little bit more, and then, also, see if there's any suggestions that the board might have about trying to expand the program, based a little bit on that conversation that the board previously had.
Okay. I personally think it's, I mean, it's a great idea, if, you know, people who do retire on a fixed income, and they want to, they want to, yeah, realize it's a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, right, that they can, per fiscal year, that they can reduce their taxes by, but...
Then they're taxed on that.
Well, no, I don't believe they get, they don't get...
Mm-hmm.
They take taxes though.
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to.
According to what I read.
The other, the other question...
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, it'd be nine dollars an hour that they'd be getting, okay.
Well, is it, right now, it says eight, right?
Right, but as of...
So, it'll go up to nine, and, okay. And that'll, that'll be automatic, or do we need to adjust the agreement?
Under the statute, I believe, it says it's automatic, but actually, that is a question that I have for counsel, and have not had a discussion with him about that.
Okay.
So, again, under the statute, I believe, that's the case.
You know, you said about expanding that, Nick? It's just like, I have a problem like when two people are at one office, and the office is closed, or one person's gone, so you like to build in inspector, he's out doing inspections, but a secretary is off that day? You know, I've had complaints where, you know, people call the office, and the phone rings, rings, ring, no one's there. You know, I would like to utilize a person to be in the office, to answer, at least answer the phone, and if the building inspector's out doing inspection, at least, if they don't, can't answer the questions, they can call them and try to get an answer, or set up something with them, you know? Because that's been a problem we have, rather than hire someone, we could, you know, utilize someone to do something like that, or someone to help Kareem in there to get organized, you know, because, you know, some of these, some of these people are up to their neck and stuff, and it'd be good to utilize some of these people for those situations, you know? Rather than hire someone and have to pay insurance, everything else.
And also...
Not to interrupt you, but...
No, that's okay.
But, the part-time people, from what I understand today, we're going to have to start paying their insurance anyway, whether they work nineteen hours or, or less, under the new law.
I don't think so, I think it's full-time employees, and...
Oh, I read a thing...
I'm not familiar, I go for the Labor Council, but I'm not familiar with an amendment to thirty-two B that did away with the requirement that you needed to work twenty hours to be eligible for health insurance.
And that's nothing under the Affordable Care Act either, right?
Yes.
No, the Affordable Care Act, what that does is, that's, they have a different standard for when an employer is required to provide health insurance, but it's a higher bar, it's called, it's a thirty-hour requirement, that didn't change anything about...
Okay, so it's still thirty hours, okay.
Because I was in with Kareem today, and she brought up on her screen, because I was, want to have a little information for the meeting here, and I saw that where it said, even part-time people, we have to, you know, pay their health insurance now.
Under the ACA...
ACA, yeah.
There, there are ways of measuring how, how people, the number of hours that people work, to come into the purview of the ACA, but there, the standard is thirty hours. So, if you have people who are at nineteen, that are on the health insurance, that's, between nineteen and thirty is, I mean, it's pretty...
So, if they're working nineteen hours, and we don't offer them health insurance now, we don't have to offer them health insurance? Okay.
You're sure, I'm at, huh?
Yes, you may have...
Because I thought if you had so many employees, Layla, you had to offer them some type of health insurance at what the rate is going, or they can get their own.
You have to offer full-time employees as defined under the ACA health insurance, so that is those employees who work over thirty or more, as defined by the ACA. Now, the issue comes in, for some employers, there's an issue, because they might have people who might work sporadically, you know, on a very limited part-time basis, then all of a sudden, they pick up a lot of hours, and then they work small amounts, you see this in like the temp agency type of situation? And so, there, you could have people who fluctuate a lot during a course of a measurement, what's called a measurement period, and they might become eligible under that ACA standard, but here, pursuant to state law and pursuant to the town's policies, you have a lower threshold for, for health insurance eligibility, so, but there's nothing that requires people with ten hours to have coverage under the ACA, or under nineteen, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, and getting back to where we started, the abatement program, I think, is great, because you got a lot of people out there who are retired and have skills, and, you know, they have a skill set that they can provide to all different...
Wonderful pool of talent, yeah.
You know, Ryan could get some IT guys in there, and, so, in any event, we will, we will research that, and...
And for the people watching here, Paul, where do they go to get an application, right at the town hall?
Right, at the clerk's office, and through the COA.
Okay, clerk's office, Council on Aging, all right, great. All right, next item is annual town meeting. It's just a reminder that it's looming in the horizon, and we have to start getting, thinking about dates for warrant items, and...
That's right. And, so, the annual town meeting's coming up in May, and petition warrant articles, this is a reminder that they'll be due in the, you get the papers at the clerk's office. For the annual town meeting, there's a requirement for ten signatures on the petitions, and that they need to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's Office, and I believe the date is March first.
Okay.
March sixth.
First.
First.
Which is, this year would likely be March second, because that is a Sunday.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
So, that's Monday, one more time, Monday, March second, okay.
All right, next item, we have a request from St. Paul's Apostle Church for a one-day liquor license, beer or wine on Sunday, February first, two thousand and fifteen, from five PM to ten PM, at St. Paul's Church Social Hall, two hundred and fifty White Road, Springfield Junction with a fundraiser, insurance is on file. Have to have a, make a motion to approve the request for the one-day liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1733.52]
Now, we have a notification from the Mass State Lottery Commission regarding an application for a Keno license from Pescali's Restaurant. So that's just a notification, Nick, right?
No, we have to adopt it. Don't, oops, excuse me, Nick? I'm not answering for Nick anymore.
No. Uh, it is a notification to the board, but it is also, if the board chose...
To have a hearing.
If the board wants to have a hearing on the matter, it's within the board's, um, purview to do so. However, we need, you need to make a decision on that this evening so that, uh, you could meet the requirements, I believe it's twenty days...
Twenty-one days, yeah.
Um, to do that. So this came in on the twenty-ninth of December, well, dated the twenty-third. This would be the opportunity for the board to do that if you wanted to have that hearing. I don't think it has to be within the twenty days or twenty-one days, but, uh...
It say, it does say twenty-one days, though.
You have to claim, claim your right.
Yeah.
Uh, claim your right to a hearing.
Yeah, we have to claim the hearing, but we don't have to have the hearing until twenty-one. That's what you were trying to say, I got it. Um, tell me, how many other Keno things do we have? Um, facilities do we have in our town?
Good question. We have...
I don't think we have any, do we?
Oh, we have, yeah. We've got, uh, Most Convenience Stores.
Oh, they have Keno's in there?
Bentley says Keno, um, trying to think of who else.
So it's pretty common?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's, uh, I'll leave it up to the board members if you feel it's necessary to have a...
If it's common and everybody has one, yeah, that's, that's a way of getting business, but it's...
Um, if we don't, well, if we don't wanna do anything, we don't have to vote. In other words, if we don't wanna have a hearing, we don't have to vote. If we do wanna have a hearing, then, um...
Do we have the hearing, do we have a hearing when the others opened up their Keno? I'm just asking for your...
Yeah, I'm trying to think.
The history. I don't recall.
I don't think so, but I'm not sure. I'm trying to think of like when Countryside got it or, well, the Emporium's had it forever.
Oh, Countryside has it?
Yeah, well, yeah, Countryside had, most, Dick's Convenience had it, um, um, I'm trying to think of who else. Um, the Emporium has it, uh...
Wait a minute.
I sound like a degenerate gambler, don't I, naming all the places that have Keno? I'm going on my experience as a selectman.
Oh, yeah, okay, is, all right. Well, let me ask you this. So is it typical that people who have Keno also run the numbers as well?
What numbers?
Like, uh, MegaBox, uh...
Yes, I believe so. I believe they're, I believe they're all offered 'cause they're all, all run out of the same machine. I may be wrong on that, but, um...
Okay.
They do, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Um, so is, if there's no, if there's no interest in holding a hearing, we won't, so, um, anyone?
Billy, you got an interest in having a hearing on that?
No, all right, we'll move on.
They're, they're under certain regulations with...
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
It might bring in a little more business for them.
Maya, um, we have, the, the annual MMA meeting is coming up.
Yes.
On, on January twenty-fourth, which is, I believe, the Saturday of the meeting, they have the, the, uh, election of the board members for the directors of the Massachusetts Inter-local Insurance Agency, for those of you like myself who forgot what MIA stands for, and the Property and Casualty Group. Um, I believe they have candidates here, Nick, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, they did, they do.
Yes, so, um, and we have to, we have to nominate a voting delegate?
Yes.
Um, I don't, you're not going to the...
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't mind doing that, since you're gonna do it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to nominate Selectmen Thorpe as the voting delegate for this year's Mass Municipal Association meeting for the MIA, nominating nominations.
Um, may I amend?
Sure.
Um, I would amend to say make me the, the, um, voting delegate, but also have Selectmen Federici be the alternate just in case something should happen. So, um, so I'll make that motion, will you?
Second.
To the amendment, okay, so all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. And the main motion?
And all in favor of the main motion?
Aye.
Aye, all right, very good, thank you. Uh, next is for the health.
Uh, the health agent update. I still have a problem with the health agent, uh, some days she's in one day, some day two days. So what we're gonna do, uh, we have s- uh, fourteen, we have fifteen people that apply, but so what I'm gonna do is look the list over, get it down to three and, uh, bring it back to the board, and then we can vote on it. Because, uh, we're so far behind with inspections, it's unbelievable. So I, I gotta get something going with this, and I talked to the health agent this morning. So I had to make her give me a definite days when she's coming in because it's hit or miss.
Right. And you can't plan if they're not here.
And she hasn't worked, uh, full nineteen hours. And so what I, I had to get her, commit her to come in two days a week, and I get a note today, so it'll be Monday and Friday.
Okay.
And then, uh, then like I say, we're trying to get a full-time health agent at the town meeting. The Republic Service Community Funds and Options, uh, we sent Angela got a...
Yeah, got a list together.
I sent that by email, yeah, okay.
That if you wanted to read it, Angela?
Oh, sure. Um, there, I'll read the list and then I'll, I'll tell you of the, the minor changes. Um, the PA system was two thousand dollars. The scholarships for the Selectmen scholarships to the high school, um, would be two thousand dollars. Mock Senate assistance would be five hundred dollars. Town beautification is scheduled for five thousand dollars. Town volunteer recognition is for five hundred dollars. The, um, uh, dress uniforms for police color guard is twenty-six hundred dollars. First Congregational Church for Burschon Park Student Events is three hundred dollars. Elementary, um, schools, as well as one book for our school library with regarding to the benefits of recycling. The Key Club will receive one thousand dollars for a care package for servicemen. The Council of Aging will receive one thousand dollars for their food pantry. Shriners will receive a two thousand dollar donation. Uh, Eastland Middle High School will receive, excuse me, Eastland Middle High School, there's a club that works with the Solarium over there, and for their renovations over there would be two thousand dollars. Uh, there is, um, there will be enough deducted from uh, the line item for beautification to cover the twenty-three hundred dollar, um, cost of the takeback that wasn't included in here, so, so we'll take that from that line.
Yeah, um, Nick informed me that the money for the shriners are gonna be something in-house, even though people from Eastland Middle use shriners?
Okay, so we need to be, find something else? Well, that, if that's the case, then it's, okay, what were you, what were you proposing? 'Cause that's one of your, your suggestions?
My proposal is because we have people on there that volunteer.
Right.
That you got?
Right.
We have a ton of volunteers at the senior center here.
Right.
I, I would like to take that money and put it toward those people, if it...
Okay, so, so that would go towards the town volunteer recognition?
If the board goes along with that.
Okay, so could we do that, put a thousand there? Take a thousand from, from there, and then, and so that'll make that to fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars for the, uh, recognitions award? So that would mean that there would be more. And then one thousand would go back and I'll, to make up for that twenty-three hundred, one thousand from, from that, the shriners, and then the one thousand from the beautification, and that'll make up the twenty-three hundred for... And let me show you how it is, because we had this remaining.
Yep.
So you got a thousand from the shriners, and then a thousand from the beautification. So that'll give us a, well over the twenty-three hundred to cover for the takeback.
Okay.
But we only have seventeen thousand, right?
Yep, that's, that, that's how, that's how I had, 'cause remember I had to recorrect that because that's the twenty-three hundred for the, uh, takeback that we have to pay for.
Yeah.
So, do you want me to refix that, or do you understand?
No, I understand that.
Okay, all right, so can we vote that in with those corrections?
Yeah, I make a, I will entertain a motion, uh, to everything Angela read there, unless she wants to read it again.
If, if there was confusion, I can. Do you need me to? Okay, and this is from beautification. He's sitting up there, he's looking like, okay. All right, so what'll be is two...
To put the money toward these proposals.
Toward these proposals, and not to exceed two thousand dollars for the PA, scholarship's still two hundred, two thousand. Mock Senate is five hundred, beautification is four thousand. We brought that down a thousand. Town recognition will now be fifteen hundred dollars. Dress uniforms for the color guard would be twenty-six hundred dollars. The, um, first congregational church for, um, which the event that they show for Burschon Park Middle School students, um, can we bring that to five hundred? 'Cause we have enough. So that'll be five hundred. And then the, um, books for the elementary school and the one for the library, eight, uh, one hundred and eighty dollars. Key Club will get a thousand, Council of Aging will get a thousand for the pantry. And then you said a thousand, oh, I, no, that would be out, so the shriners would be out. And then the, um, Eastland Middle Club that takes care of the Solarium will get two thousand dollars for repairs to the Solarium. And that should come up to a total of, to take care of the twenty thousand one hundred and ninety-four. Uh, there may be a little change, but not much. And that, that, and if there is to be anything left to place it in with the town recognition, uh, to go for the town recognition of volunteers.
Uh, so move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just to let people know that this figure is, that I made through the chair. How many years, was this like three, four years worth of these funds? Just, we, I don't want townspeople to think we get twenty thousand dollars a year from the trash company, 'cause it's... But this was like three or four years worth of, uh, worth of the, this money that they gave the town that we hadn't done anything with, so we're sort of catching up here, uh, in light of the fact that we're renegotiating the contract, so...
That's money for community funds.
Yes.
For community, and, and through this, just, you know, to be sure, we're, it's gonna benefit our veterans. The high school is gonna benefit. Our whole town will benefit from the beautification, uh, through the, uh, garden club. Um, Brown Farm will receive, um, some funds to, um, put some picnic tables up, um, at Brown Farm. Heritage Park will be taken care of and the Rotary. Our, as a whole, our volunteers who are giving much to the town will have an opportunity to, to recognize them. Our police services are, are being, uh, receiving, receiving something and benefiting from it. Our Burschon Park Middle School students will receive an evening, um, from the town. Uh, all of these schools will be covered, um, because each, uh, school will get, um, something. The high school's getting something, Burschon Park's getting something, all of the elementary schools will be receiving a book. And our library will receive something, our Key Club and our Council of Aging as, as being covered. And then, um, I think we hit just about everybody.
All in favor of Selectmen Thorpe?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hit motion pass?
Okay.
The next thing we have, uh, all Nick talking is because he has talked to these people as recently as this morning, Nick, huh?
So, this is the item about the trash contracts. Again, there's two, there are two contracts for consideration. One is for the hauling services for municipal and the residential waste. The other is, and that is currently with Republic Services. Um, the other is for the disposal of recyclable materials, paper and cardboard, and bottles and cans and the like. Uh, that is with the Springfield Murph, the, uh, facility down on Bernie Ave in Springfield. And so, first, um, I would share with the board that I received an email from, um, the, uh, let's see, from Arlene Miller. And in that is a letter, and this came in today, so this is a letter that was sent over from, uh, the, uh, from Republic Services to, um, Town of Long Meadow. And so this would give you an idea, the letter of, this is, uh, I believe, a draft offer of services. And, um, so we haven't received a similar letter yet from them. And so I will be trying to make contact with Mr. Stanis, uh, both on this matter and, and, uh, the community funds tomorrow.
Okay.
And find out when, you know, a letter might be forthcoming here. Town of Long Meadow has also reached out and they would like to meet, um, if possible, tomorrow, although I haven't heard back from them about the time. I indicated to them that I might be available in the afternoon. So if, if that's the case, then it'll either be a phone call or a quick trip, uh, to find out, you know, what their thoughts are about RFP and the timeline and so forth. I hope to have to the board by your next meeting, an offer in hand from Republic Services so that the decision can be made whether or not to take that offer or go out through an RFP process, possibly with the Town of Long Meadow.
Okay.
With respect to the Murph contract, um, this is one that has been before the board at a few meetings now at least, and I would ask the board to give this one consideration and, um, if ready, take a vote to either accept it or not. And with the recommendation to accept.
Um, leave it here.
Yep.
All right. Remind me, what's the deadline to get that discount?
The deadline, they were willing to be flexible, in particular with understanding, um, they're, they're looking for the commitment, so um, they understand that communities may need to go to a town meeting to get approval for a five-year, uh, contract.
And we did, and we did a five-year before, too.
We, the, the board, uh, under Town Council's advice, presented to town meeting a, uh, warrant article that covered that, uh, situation, so you, it should be all, should be, uh, that matter should be resolved so that if the board felt comfortable with doing that, you know, this contract's before you. Not to rush the board into it, but it is something where the, they would like to know, um, what the town's position's going to be.
Through, through the, through the chair, uh, Selectmen Federici, do you have any feelings on this, since you're the senior?
I have, um, that's in years of service, I don't like, by the way.
Oh.
I have, uh, I, I, I mean, there's, they're sort of the only game in town, I guess, as...
Oh, is that what it is?
As far as local, but, uh, I don't think we've ever had a problem, um, so I, I have no problem approving, approving the, uh, the contract with the Murph, as they call it.
And our, this is Arlene, correct?
Uh, Arlene, yes, Arlene did present and speak with the board about the contract, um, went over, you know, the provisions, and, uh...
Now, if I may...
I think she would, I think her position was that, um, it is still a good opportunity for communities, although maybe the board had a different take on what she had to say. I think she was generally positive about it.
Uh, through the chair, just one question. I noticed, um, they had talked about paying our, our fiscal year, you know, our entire two thousand and sixteen public education fee, which I don't think is, was like eight hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, or something in that neighborhood. But the deadline for that was twelve thirty-one fourteen. Do you think they would extend it?
I, I think that they would be, um, willing to.
Okay.
I mean, and if the answer's no, then, but I, I think that they're willing to.
I know they'll do half up to June first, so, um, but, okay, if we can get all of it, obviously.
You think they'll agree to that, Nick, to extend it?
I think, uh, the town could only ask.
Yeah.
And, you know, say, uh...
Okay, uh, I make a motion to entertain, uh, accepting the MFR contract.
So move?
Is there a second?
Second, and...
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would amend it to ask for the full coverage, pending full coverage of the, um, educational fee.
I have a, a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, could the, with that, adding to the motion, would that be pending the full coverage? If that is not, um, granted, does the board want to then reconsider?
Yeah, 'cause we could do that at the next meeting, right? And we wouldn't lose anything.
Well, we...
'Cause we would still get half, I mean, if...
Right, I, I mean, my opinion is, uh, I don't know if we wanna put that in there as a contingency or just request it. I mean, we're, mostly talking about it as four hundred and twenty-five dollars, so I hate to hold the contract up for that dollar amount, so... So we, we got a motion, we get it seconded, right?
Um, okay.
Did you second it, Angela?
I did.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 But you will ask for that money?
Yeah.
Okay.
All opposed? Motion pass? Okay, the next thing we got on the agenda is...
To Long Meadow, except there was already?
I don't know.
Just find that out first, okay.
Okay, Angela?
Yeah, I, I, I was just wondering what our neighboring communities had done, and maybe we should've checked with them first before we accepted it, but it's done now, we've, it's, it's passed. But we still should check and see what they're doing, so just in case we have to...
Well, just like Nick and I talked about it today, our, you know, it, it, we thought it was a good... was a good thing looking into it and for the benefits we get out of it and the service we get.
Yep. I don't have any problem with the service, right.
There's no tipping fee and, you know.
Yep. I've heard good, good reports.
You want to give any update, Nick, on the Hampton County Health Assessment?
It wasn't so much, I, I didn't have too much new news, although to say, to report that there's been a change in the time for the shared public health nurse meeting on Thursday.
Oh, there is?
To 10 o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
From 8:30 to 10 because the Hampton County Health Coalition canceled its monthly meeting. So they're going to meet at 10, Congress Street, usual place. But I, I had a, had a note, or is there any follow-up on that?
There was supposed to be, through the chair, there was supposed to be an assessment done tomorrow evening, but I have not heard anybody who has volunteered to come forth for it. And so I'm going to ask the gentleman if he can move it back next week. Because as soon as he does that, then the assessment will be completed. So we just need to have people to come...
Change the date on Thursday, is what you're saying?
We're going to change the date that was for tomorrow, because nobody has volunteered to come, to change it to another date and see if, you know, be a little more aggressive with trying to get some other folks there.
Are they going to notify us on that, or?
We actually set up the...
Because I didn't, I didn't even know about this date till this morning.
Actually, it was announced at our last meeting. Okay. Now, so, so at our next meeting, I'll make sure you know when the, when it's going to be. It probably will be next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday.
I, I just don't see where this is going to benefit the Town of Islam Meadow myself.
Well, it's already a motion.
Because we have a health nurse already.
Oh, no, this is, this is more so getting information that's going to help us a lot with probably applying for grants, et cetera, in the future. Did you, you didn't speak to the gentleman?
No.
I will make sure I give you his number so you can have the chat.
Mr. Chairman? Just to maybe touch, just for a moment, if I could, just say to the board that I think one of the things that you, that you were bringing up is different from the assessment process, which is to come up with those health issues and strategies for the community. But the other thing that I believe you're alluding to is the, the issue of the shared public health nurse grant running out at the end of March, although there may be a little bit of money left over to extend it somewhat.
Yeah, but not very long.
Right, not, not for very long. And so...
So you're talking about that.
Perhaps the board could have that discussion, if not this evening, at the next meeting, to see whether or not it's something that you want to try and sustain, although I think the board has seen numbers recently that were indicated. Islam Meadow in a similar fashion to the veterans would probably carry a bulk of the cost.
Oh, no, not like that again. Oh, no. Is it, is it possible we can have that, those numbers again for, because I, I don't remember seeing those. Did you see those, Paul?
No, I don't remember seeing them.
Yeah, so maybe you can resend those out, because I, I'll, we're taking a hosing on the veterans, I feel. I, I'm wondering if they're getting the services that they need. And so that's why I'm so adamant about making sure that, calling that meeting for the veterans, and it's important for us to be there, because we might even want to consider hiring our own at this point. But certainly after we have a meeting with them, if we can't come to a meeting of the minds, I certainly will bring it back. Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's the way it is for that one, yeah.
That'll be in Monson?
That'll be in Monson.
You'll let us know about that?
Absolutely, absolutely. But Nick is going to see if they can change the date, because right now, he was saying it's scheduled for the 20th.
And that was, today was the only notice about the meeting that, you know, that we've received.
Okay. And they're their own people, so, okay. So we'll move forward and try to get that meeting. But as far as the shared nurse, through the chair, as far as the shared nurse goes, if the rest of the board could get that information with regards to how much that's going to cost and I, I'll make I statements. I don't, we have a nurse, although it's limited. I don't know if we can absorb, if it's going to be like the veterans, I don't think we can absorb another cost like that. And especially with no reimbursements.
Well, we looked at them, Nick, and we would be paying, we'd be the most costly on that, right?
Yes.
We'd be absorbing, we'd be absorbing the costs of the Town of Islam Meadow compared to other towns, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be worth our while, myself.
Yeah. I, I, it'd be interesting to look at the numbers, just so that Paul and I, Selectman Ferriachi and myself could be, be aware of those numbers. But I, I will say, if it's anything like the other scenario with the veterans, I, I don't know, I would have a hard time supporting it without quite a bit of information. What do you think, Selectman Ferriachi? All right.
All right. Turn it over to you, Paul.
No, you still got new business.
There you go.
Yeah.
See that MOU?
Yep.
Oh, this, this, this MOU, we're, we're involved with, there's Islam Meadow, three towns involved in this. And what we have, we got a deadline for our signature here. I believe it's January 20th, Nick, for that.
I don't have a solid deadline back on this. What the board has before you is an MOU that apparently the school department has committed to. And it's a partnership with Chicagoee, Springfield, and Islam Meadow to address substance abuse issues among school students, young people 12 to 15. And so this came sort of out of the blue. I hadn't been aware of it over at the school, school department. And truly, it came last week and really haven't, I sent an email back to the commissioner who sent it to me and had a couple of questions about a deadline, explained that this would be a first read for the board, whether or not the board would want to, you know, if the board supported it even still, we don't even have the proper signature sheet, so.
Right. Are we, are we as a board required? It looks like it's an agreement between the school committees. Now, see, Mayor Sarno happens to be the chair of the school committee in Springfield. So I could see why his name was on there. I don't see where, what are they asking from the town where we would have to approve this?
Well, in the email from Commissioner Colton, she indicated that it needs to be signed by the mayor or town manager in each municipality. And the Board of Selectmen would qualify it, obviously, then as the chief elected body for Town of Islam Meadow.
Okay.
So my questions back to her were, what are your timelines?
Right.
And can, or should we have some different signature sheets for the board to sign them?
Right, and, and that was sent off, have we gotten a response from that yet?
I have not.
Okay, so then, through the chair, I would wait to hear those responses because the way it looks right now, it's an agreement between the school department and...
And the training specifically for underage drinking marijuana use for, for young people between ages 12 and 15.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I definitely would like to receive more information before, yeah.
Yeah, we can hear, just get a response and let's see what, because like Selectman Thorpe says, it looked like Gordon Smith signed it. So, you know, I don't know if that's on behalf of the town or just behalf of the schools.
Well, he can't sign on behalf of the town, he can sign on behalf of the schools.
Right, depending on how they're approaching what they need, so. All right.
Okay, the next item we have, 26, a request for approval of seepage handlers permit. Wind River Environmental, 577 Main Street, Hudson, Mass. John O'Connell, CEO.
So moved?
A second?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. It's an approval request for what?
He's a, he's a septic, through the chair, he's a septic handler, so he needs a permit to, to work within the town.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. I just needed clarification, okay? To haul it.
Stuff that we don't want to haul.
Yeah, I hear you. And don't go past my house on a breezy day.
Is there a second?
Yeah, there's a second.
Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passed? Uh, let's see, what else we got here? Number 27, food establishment permit application for approval. Just Like Home Incorporated, 165 Shaker Road. Application approved by Don Toon Health Agent.
So moved?
One second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passed?
Thank you, sir. Our next item, under correspondence, we have a memo from the Board of Library Trustees regarding the town office's holiday closings. I guess they weren't too thrilled with us that we closed the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's. And the reason, I don't know if we discussed this with them, but the reason I know the board discussed this was a question of, right, the Board of Selectmen, obviously, are the, are the keepers of the buildings in town, and our thought process was being closed half a day on the day before both of those days and closed on Christmas and New Year's. We felt to fire up the heating systems and the electrical systems and everything for one day before the weekend would, for the amount of people, you know, people sometimes take days off on those days and whatnot. So we felt it wouldn't be in the town's best interest to spend that money to open those, those buildings on those days. And I also understand, I was speaking to someone, I, I believe there's been times, and Nick, you can please correct me on this, because I don't want to start a war, but I believe there's been times when the library's been closed, when town hall's been open, so.
In snow days.
Right.
So, you know, we, I guess it's just a matter of everybody working together.
Yeah, we didn't close the library, though.
Well, that's part of the building, that.
Part of the town hall.
Yeah, that's part of town hall.
This only comes up once in five years, also.
So, in any event, so that's what, that's, that was basically why we did it.
But they could have still been open if they wanted to, correct, or no?
I don't believe so, because we closed the building.
Ah.
So.
Okay.
And then the other item, Nick, is there's notices from Charter of Communication regarding system update. Hey, they're actually, actually lowering a fee. Does it say that on the law? I'm sorry.
I know.
But anyways, um...
Amazing.
Current rate is actually going down by 33 cents, the HD or DVR, DVR, HD receivers and remotes. And the annual franchise fee is actually being reduced by 0.4%.
Wait for it.
And then they have, they've changed emergency contact information. And I guess the only thing I missed was the system update. I guess this is all, we don't know when the big changeover's happening, we haven't heard anything yet. But we were, sometime they originally said...
What?
The vote of the FCC was postponed until January 17th, I think.
Okay.
So it brought, bringing a decision that one of the parties had failed to turn over 30,000 pages of the rest of documents.
Is that all?
Yeah.
30,000 pages?
With all due respect, with all due respect to our audience, there's got to be an attorney involved somewhere if there's 30,000 pages on that. Because you guys go by the pounds.
Before we get into town council, would you mind reading the meeting's invitations?
Absolutely. LCAT meeting on Wednesday, the 14th, at 10:00 a.m. at the LCAT studio located at 180 Maple Street. Cable Advisory Committee meeting will also be on Wednesday, January 14, 2015, not 14, at 11:00 a.m. And also at the LCAT studio located at 180 Maple Street. The town office will be closed on Monday, January 19th, in observance of Martin Luther King Day.
Do we have to notify the town hall?
Because of the library?
I mean, the library?
Okay, nice, nice. Board of Selectmen meeting right now is scheduled on, hmm, on Tuesday, January 20th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Town Hall Hearing Room. There's an invitation for the Bay Path University, they'll be having the ribbon cutting for the Philip H. Ryan Health Science Center located at 1 Denzil Road on Thursday, January 22nd, and that'll take place from 3:30 p.m. to 5:30. You need to RSVP by...
Today.
Today. The MMA Annual Meeting and Trade Show will be on Friday, January 23rd, and Saturday, January 24th, at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston. Board of Selectmen meeting will be on Tuesday, February 3rd, at 6:00 p.m., Town Hall Hearing Room. E-Leaf Dinner, Annual Dinner Dance for Education, it's going to be great. Their special 20th Anniversary Celebration is on Saturday, February 7th, at the Twin Hills Country Club in Long Meadow. They're requesting you to wear black and white, not so sure about that. And the Board of Selectmen meeting will be on Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, at 16:00 p.m., and that'll be in the Town Hall Hearing Room.
Thank you. Now, if we could get, no, I didn't, I, I would, see if Lorraine or Nick can plead ignorance on our part and call tomorrow for that. But now it's time for a town council. Hello again?
Yes.
Same to you.
Hey.
They left us a little walkway.
Why don't we go through, we have the one carryover executive regarding, executive session regarding the...
Vacation requests for the...
And then we have, I assume 30 is not executive?
Correct.
31 is?
32 would be, and I'd add 14 to go under that, that avenue.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure what the direct deposit issue is. I don't have anything in my packet dealing with that, so I don't know whether that, whether that's what it is.
I think that had to do with getting rid of the, requiring new employees and switching people over from a paper copy to make the mandate to have direct deposit of their paychecks.
Right. And at this point, I, I believe, Labor Council was here, so I would defer to her on this question, but I believe if, if that is going to be a consideration, that it, for the union employees at least, you would have to bargain that.
Well, actually, it is in the, in both contracts as it stands right now, is my understanding. Not everybody's taking advantage, but it is in the contract.
If it's in their contracts, then it's a matter of just implementing it, but for those people, and if it's not, if there are union contracts that don't have, those union employees, whatever, you'd have to impact.
Okay.
Will that be bargained? The, 34 and 35, the employee grievance and the civil service appeal are both executive session as well.
Okay. All right, so why don't we start with number 30?
Start and finish.
Yes.
This is the agreement, or proposed agreement, that I believe the board and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works had discussed last year in the spring, when the enterprise funds were put forward to town meeting for adoption. And there was going to be a general agreement as to the allocation of costs for the global, for lack of a better term, the global expenses that departments incur, such as workers' compensation insurance, health insurance, retirement coverage. And those were going to be allocated in some fashion where the employees who were working under the enterprise funds were shared employees in the sense that they were department employees or highway department employees who would not be covered under that. There would be an adjustment and the boards would work out how that was going to go. And then the other issue along with that was to the extent that there are pieces of equipment, the motor vehicles or other equipment, that are not used totally by the water and/or sewer enterprise fund, that those equi, those pieces of equipment would have to be allocated between the Department of Public Works and its other department. and its other divisions in the water and sewer. But that's not really an issue for,
With us.
For the board, because it's, it's an internal division there, except to the extent that you would use any of those vehicles in conjunction with any municipal operations outside of the DPW.
Like plowing snow, right? Because they use some of those employees to plow.
Plowing snow is part of their job?
Part of, well, it's part of the DPW job, it, well, it's part of the DPW, the truck driver's job, but someone is assigned to the water and sewer division, that truck,
Right.
would be a water and sewer truck.
Right, right.
And to the extent that you're going to be using it for,
DPW purposes.
Purposes, there could be some type of allocation.
But that's within, that's within their,
Yeah, that sounds.
Yeah, that's kind of what it do with.
Their equipment, their equipment, um, distribution is an internal thing for them to work out. The global aspects of the, the insurances and the, and the other, uh, retirement issues and, and things of that nature, those are the issues where the two boards need to determine what's a fair allocation of those costs, as they're divided between the funds. And that's what the agreement provides for, basically.
Right, all right, and I think, yeah, they've got the, uh, so, as far as this, the allocation policies, that's something you've reviewed?
The allocation policies, I've looked at them, I haven't looked at the numbers because, basically, it's, it's between the Board of Public Works and the Board of Selectmen to agree. The, the agreement, this, this agreement is the one that arises out of the suggestion by the auditor,
Right.
for there to be a written internal policy. And that was going to be adopted, um, actually was intended to be adopted prior to this point in time. And it calls for the allocation of the costs to be determined by a meeting between the boards by, I think, the middle of next month, for the upcoming annual town meeting. So, um, this would be sort of saying you're going to work out this, the allocation, and then you're gonna have to sit down and work on the allocation in the next six weeks.
But is this policy something we have to enact, or is this, should we wait till we actually need?
It's what the, it's what the auditor had recommended a year and a half ago when this was done, and I think the boards at that time agreed that they would do it.
I know, we worked on it last year, and that's, you know, and, and the framework of it and the, the items that would be included in it, so.
Yeah.
So, but we can hold off until we meet with them?
Yeah, I think you could hold off until you meet with, I think you could put it all together in a policy that puts everything together.
Okay.
Here's the allocation, and here's what the initial costs for the allocation are going to be.
Any questions? You had that look.
So, what, what is, what is the next step you want to meet with?
Yeah, at some point, um, I know, I know last year I met with, um, a few of the gentlemen, I know Mr. Burek had mentioned getting together and, and ironing out the, uh, the, uh, items, I mean, we basically got it ironed out, what's, what's gonna be included in there. But it's just a matter of getting it on paper and getting it, you know, so it, it's set in stone.
So, are they, they're gonna be meeting with us, us as a board?
Uh, they could, that's not a problem.
Just so that we all get the same information?
Yeah, we could do that, we could do that.
Or is that too formal? Is that gonna slow it down?
I don't know, I can, I, I can check with, um, with Mr. Burek and Mr. Madison and see.
It just would be helpful, if, if there's gonna be two of them, then we all might as well be there too.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's a form for their board, too.
Well, no, it's not, because one's DPW and one is, um,
So Burek and, oh, Madison.
Yeah, one's appropriations, one, yeah. So, but we'll see.
But anyway, that agreement, um, is just, it does sort of outline the global costs.
But it doesn't give any,
Doesn't give any numbers.
Right, that's the thing, you're not, yeah, so.
There are some, but attached to it, there are some numbers that were received from Department of Public Works, where they, they've sort of identified the employees who are part of the water and those that are covered by the sewer fund. And it does sort of put some percentages of what those costs are.
Right.
But if the board hasn't discussed it with the Board of Public Works, I, I think it,
Yeah, right.
you need to agree to those numbers before you'd be signing something in the board.
Yeah, we'll say, I have no problem with the whole board meeting, so we'll, we'll talk to them and go from there. All right. So we are now, I'd like to make a motion to go.
Before, before we go into executive, could I ask to be an alternate on the, on the MGM litigation, just as an alternate?
Sure.
So, would you like to?
Make a motion to have Selectmen Thorpe as an, as an alternate to the, what was it officially called?
Oh, Jesus.
No, it wasn't called that.
Did you do that on purpose?
Denied.
Oh, you're funny.
It's right here, it's right here, it's the local mitigation committee, local, the, the surrounding community mitigation committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, or you're not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, if I can't, if I can't make the meetings or whatever, let's, all right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there was an item from earlier, uh, for Labor Council to discuss.
On number fourteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, that's executive, yes, yes.
And also, I'm sorry, with the respect to, um, the request to delay the decision on the, um, healthcare? Is the board gonna have a discussion about that?
Yes, I thought so.
Yes. And that wouldn't be executive, right?
So, right, the, the note I have here is, there were questions for Labor Council regarding thirty-two B, and should the Board of Selectmen consider soliciting, uh, input from the union members outside of the process, as, um, Mr. Kylie had, I think, suggested earlier today.
How are you?
Hey.
I'll fill you in.
Yeah, come in.
We had a gentleman from the United Food Commercial, Food and Commercial Workers Union here who represents the bus drivers and maintenance people in the senior housing, I believe, is that, uh, not yet? So, what he was wondering, I guess they were not overly enthralled with us unilaterally deciding on the insurance thing, and they wanted some input from, yeah, a, a brief period where they, we could get input from union members regarding changing, changing the health policies, you know, either changing deductibles or, or, um, or co-pays. Uh, and we were, we wanted to discuss that with, get, get your thoughts on that matter. As far as, is that normally done, you know, should we do it? We don't want to exclude them, but we don't want the process to drag on forever. If we were, if we were gonna do this, would we set aside a month and say, okay, if we can get together, get your opinions on, you know, get your, any union members who want to give their opinion?
They're a union that has health insurance under the town's insurance. So, wouldn't they be on the, wouldn't they have a representative, representative on the PEC committee? I think they would have to get a notice.
Okay.
Well, I guess there was some confusion with the, the notice.
Yeah, because we haven't even, all we've done is so far vote to,
Right. You reaffirmed the, the vote that had taken, essentially.
Mr. Chairman, that vote doesn't take.
We didn't take the vote.
Oh, okay.
Because we're waiting to talk to you.
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
Um, and he had asked for us to, uh, not take the vote.
Okay.
Um, because ta, I think he viewed that if we took the vote, that he would lose, they would lose the opportunity to be able to, to have input.
Participate.
Well, there, there are a couple of, of issues. As a practical matter, I think it's good to reaffirm a vote, because it puts people on notice that the process is beginning again. But there, there's one read of the law that says, once you've taken a vote, you don't have to again. So I, I put that, I think it's good practice to do so, and I think there, there's some, some room there, but that's the first thing I'd say. The second thing I would say is that nothing precludes the towns from discussing issues of health insurance with the union. And the plan design process is sort of a, it's a time-sensitive one. So you don't want to do something that delays the process. And certainly, um, my understanding, and I don't have the statute in front of me, but my recollection is that when you go through, there, first you give notice to the Insurance Advisory Committee, then there's the PEC committee that ends up looking at the plan design changes, um, that are being proposed. And, and there's union representation on that committee. So it's not that they're not providing input necessarily into that process, but that the process is one that is necessarily expedited to, to really, um, to assist towns in being able to make plan design changes when, knowing that health insurance is, contracts are, are usually annual. You know, and you may be faced with astronomical costs from year to year. So, so I don't think that there's anything that precludes, um, the town, certainly, from, from, um, listening, but I don't, I, I, there's also doesn't appear to be any compelling reason why you would, why you would delay the process, which is a very time-sensitive one, and I, I do say that.
Time-sensitive, I think it's a thirty-day window for when you notify the union group,
Right.
that you're proposing changes.
Haven't we done that already?
I have a timeline.
Yeah.
We sent letters. Chairman, I, I think, my understanding of the timeline would be that if the board took the vote, you would still need to come up with what the proposed changes are so that you could send them out. And the clock would start ticking once those, that notice is sent out. So, you still need to come up with a plan that you want to propose as a basis for starting that thirty-day window.
I, I do have a timeline in my briefcase, if I could grab it, just to sort of run it through, but it's something I could.
Okay.
So, while we're trying to propose something, we could get information from this unit?
Well, here's the, uh, for the Labor Council, but the purpose of the, of the insurance statute is for the town to be able to deal with all of its bargaining groups in a, in a collective manner. And so, what you're, what you do is, you decide what the changes to the plan are within the parameters of the statute, what the cost savings will be, and then submit it to the union for their response and discussion. And if you can agree, you implement it, and if you can't agree, I'm gonna defer to Council again, it, it goes to a third party who reviews, three mem, three people, I think, or three entities, who review your proposed changes to determine whether the savings that you had believed you were going to receive will be received, number one, and number two, that those changes will be beneficial to both the town and the employees. And once that's done, the, the changes go into effect. That's a simplistic version of the way I sort of understand it.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty good explanation, to be honest with you.
So what you're basically saying is, if we, if we propose changes to the, to the, um,
Copation.
Yeah, the insurance situation as it stands now, the people that are representing the unions can do, basically, what he's suggesting that we do. They go back to their members and ask if they, if they approve of these, and if not, why not? And then we either come to some, some agreement, or we go before this three-person panel.
Right.
So in effect, we're doing the same thing, but we're doing it, they're, they're doing the legwork instead of us, for lack of a better word. In other words, they're, they're talking to their union members instead of us talking to their union members. Because what he was concerned about are the people that are using insurance the most, obviously, which, you know, um, who may be affected, and I, and I don't know right now until we get figures. Obviously, if you say, okay, you're increasing your co-pay, or you're increasing your whatever, your deductible, then the, the rate is gonna go down. You know, so, and that, you know, with people who use their insurance a lot, that's not gonna be equitable. You know, if your insurance goes down, but you've got four kids or three kids, and they're all, they're all, um, using up their, their co-pays and deductibles, then that's not gonna be, you know, but, uh, that's not gonna be an equitable swap, as opposed to somebody who never uses their insurance, and they get a reduction in their rate, but they never have to use the co-pays or the, or the, you know, increased deductible. So, um, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if, if we want to proceed with this, I, I don't want to exclude people, but it doesn't sound like, through the process, anybody would be excluded.
No, no, and actually, just to sort of give you a sense of the timeline, so what the, the town, what's, what's going to be incumbent on the town before they even send out the initial notice? Is that they calculate the savings, um, the anticipated savings, um, by making the plan design changes. And they have to actually put that, really have that cost savings estimates done ahead of time, really know what the plan they want to have done. Once they do that, they send out the written notices to the IAC. Within ten days of receiving the notices, then you have to meet, the town has to meet, um, with the public, with, with the IAC to discuss the proposed plan design changes. Then, after that meeting, um, with the IAC, or ten days after the IAC gets noticed, let's say they don't want to participate in that discussion, there's another notice that has to go to every single collective bargaining unit, and, um, the retirees, um,
Represented.
had, yeah, representative, um, about the intent, and then you reconvene to discuss it. So there really is a, a process, a thirty-day negotiation period that is meant to get everybody who wants to be at the table at the table to talk about this. And then, and then from there, once those discussions happen, then, then either you come to an agreement, or if not, then it goes essentially to the state who will ultimately weigh in on the decision. So there is, there is, there is a method, um, to really expedite the changes, but really give everybody a chance to be at the table.
And we can't do anything until we get,
Do your numbers.
Yeah, we're, do the numbers, and, okay.
And, and just the, the other timeline, I think, is that once the, the thirty-day window from the date that the notice originally went out to the union with, to the unions with the change information, if you don't reach that agreement and it goes to that state,
The panel.
Panel, they have thirty days
Yep, yep.
to, to get the response back. So, it's structured so that once you've made your proposal, that you're, you have an answer, whether it's approved or not, within time to implement it for your July one or June one health insurance changes, so that you can roll it in without being hung up for a year or two trying to impose it.
Also, through the chair, doesn't it need to be, um, done in order for, um, enrollment, open season? Or, doesn't Corinne have a deadline, too?
Well, that's, that's what I was talking with the board earlier, yes, this evening, and I, that's what, uh, town councils just, uh,
So July.
was talking about, is that, he's saying July, but what we have, what Corinne has to work with is that open enrollment is going to start on or about May first. It's a thirty-day period. And, um, so if you're looking at, uh, even a, if we're looking at the timeline as laid out, call it January twentieth, you have numbers, say you agree, notice goes out sometime shortly after that. Now we're looking at possibly February, late February, give or, give or take a couple days here or there. You know, now, if that has to go to an appeal, now you're looking at April one. Time can slip quickly.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So it would sound like we should get,
It's a process.
Plus, plus I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I think there's also time for, uh, that is also included to decide who's gonna be on that panel? Isn't there some sort of a, a, um, decision?
Yes.
Where the town and the union each get a, a, a choice? So there'll be a couple of days for, I think, that decision to be made, uh, on that three-member panel.
But it sounds like the first step we have to do is decide what we want to look at as far as changes in the, in the policy, you know, in the, in the plan, and get that quantified, and then,
Before we can even do that, don't we have to make the vote? That's the question.
No, we don't vote on it until we know, do we vote on it?
Do we know the changes?
Do we know the changes, right?
Well, do you vote?
As, as a practical matter, the, the statute, it, one reading, the statute, you could take the position that the statute says, once you vote, which you did before, it's fine. Our firm has been recommending it's good practice to just, to redo the vote for due process reasons, but, so, but you could take it now?
Even if you take it now and you don't do anything.
Right, it's fine.
It doesn't impact anything. You've already adopted it, you, you can go forward and do it. What Leila's saying is, if you re, if you revote and then renotice all of the unions, then they know it's coming and they're aware of it. But if you take the vote and are unable to come up with design changes that you're comfortable with, or design changes that really work, or think are, are, are gonna be acceptable, then you don't have to do anything.
Yeah, you don't.
But it, but this vote should be taken, at least to start the process.
So we should vote, huh?
Just to get the thing moving.
Listening to,
It's not gonna hurt, it's not gonna hurt you if I vote.
Right, okay, it's not, it's not gonna hurt anyone else, either.
Nope.
Okay. Oh.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt Mass General Law Chapter thirty-two B?
So moved. So moved.
Sections.
Sections twenty-one to twenty-three.
Yeah, is it twenty-one to twenty-three or twenty-five?
Twenty-three, according to this.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And we'll make sure, I'm sure as a board that we include it.
Yeah, yeah, well, all right.
Then I would, it's good to say to the board then, um, based on some past discussions and or, uh, specific input from the board as to what you might like to see for calculations, like to present them to the board at the next, you know.
Yes.
To try and get them to you sooner rather than later.
Right.
Uh, as to what a range of, you know, choices might be on different changes.
If you could do that for the twentieth, it'd be great. That way we can get the process going. Someone said to my right. All right, very good.
With, with the government doing what they're doing, this control, whole change in everything with this healthcare, right?
Hmm. You mean the, the federal changes?
Yeah, with, with the change in the Congress and the House.
That's still, you still formulate your plan, I mean, as long as you provide some basic coverages that are there. You're still within the separate window from the federal requirements, I think, I mean, I leave that stuff to Leila, cause I don't stay up on it, but.
All right, um, I would like to make a motion to move to executive session to discuss matters of union and non-union negotiations. What else we have here?
Employee grievance.
Employee grievances.
And pending, uh, litigation.
Pending litigation to return to open session, I like to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Self-advocates, yes.
No, I, you gotta, you gotta get a, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Secretary Thorpe?
Yes.
Secretary Gorman?
Yes.
Secretary Federius, yes, all right.